I don't know. He was probably here last night. He probably sat here for two hours, too, before he left. You ready there, General? I will reconvene the meeting of Dublin City Council for Tuesday, January the 22nd. Kathy, could you please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have a couple of special presentations to go through here initially. One of them, I know, that is going to be a... Actually, both of them have a lot of sentimental value for many of us up here. You know, we have the opportunity to interact with a lot of different government officials in our role up here and a lot of different community activists and people that are either elected or volunteer their services to our community. And it's not just the Dublin community, but it's the central Ohio community and really across the state. And this first individual that we're going to recognize, I have come to have a tremendous amount of respect for, for his dedication, not only to the residents he represented here in Dublin, but across his house district that he served on for quite a while. And it is Representative Mike Duffy. And I do have a proclamation here that I'd like to read, and then I'll open up the floor. And, Mike, we're going to just try to embarrass you as much as we possibly can, if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Whereas, Mike Duffy served as the 21st District Representative of the Ohio House of Representatives from 2011 to 2018. And whereas, he represented approximately 116,000 citizens of northern Franklin County, including portions of Dublin, Worthington, and Columbus, as well as Washington, Perry, and Sharon Townships. And whereas, as a Worthington... Thomas Worthington... We'll forgive you for that. Thomas Worthington graduate and former member of Worthington City Council, Mike well knows the challenges and opportunities faced by local governments and represented his district, including the city of Dublin, very well during his tenure at the State House. And whereas, as our state representative, Mike served as the Chairman of the Higher Education and Workforce Committee and a Higher Education Subcommittee, and as Vice Chairman of the Joint Committee on Agency Rule Review, in addition to serving as a member on the House and on a number of House committees. And whereas, prior to serving the 21st District, Mike worked for Hinson Limited Public Relations as a teacher for AmeriCorps Vista and as a reporter for Hannah News Services, covering the Ohio Legislature. And whereas, he is the principal and owner of Black Dog Public Relations, a boutique public relations firm specializing in media relations, community affairs, and political consulting. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, congratulate Mike Duffy on an outstanding career, serving as our state representative, and wishing him well and all the best in his future endeavors. Signed this 22nd day of January 2019. Congratulations. (applause). I'm just going to add a couple of more thoughts, and then I'm going to come give this to you, and I'll open it up to my fellow council members. I know Vice Mayor Grooms has worked with you quite a bit. We always had a friend in the state legislature when it came to Mike Duffy. If we had an issue, no matter what it was, when we called Mike, he would not only respond, but he would then go to bat for us. And that doesn't happen all the time at the Ohio House. There are a lot of divided issues, but Mike was always on the side of local community, local government, local control, home rule, and all of those issues. So, Mike, I would personally like to express my appreciation for every single time that we called on you and you always answered the phone. So, thank you very much for that, Mike.[236.12][236.12](applause). But then we're going to have him tell us about his new job.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for this recognition. I am now Senior Vice Chancellor at the Ohio Department of Higher Education, starting my second week this week. It is a nine-to-five job. I get to clock in and keep my hours in a spreadsheet. But I'm not elected anymore, and as I think that you can recognize, there's so much in your life outside of the job in terms of the evenings, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to spend more time with my family and further develop my passion for higher education. So, it's a really exciting opportunity, and I'm very excited to be part of the Duane Administration.
Well, you will always be welcome here in Dublin, Mike.
Thank you very much.
We do have an OU campus here that you're going to maybe come back and visit. But anybody else? Anybody? Chris?
I just... I have been so impressed by your remarkable career, and I think what I will take away from watching you as an elected in your time there is your courage, which was really tremendous. Your courage to take on school district boundaries, right? There are two things that I've always been taught that are closest to people's hearts, and that's their kids and their money, and you took on both of them at the same time. And that is a tremendous display of courage. I am so appreciative that you weren't a party guy. You were never afraid to go against your party, to do the right thing, and that is in short supply. So, I think that we can all take great lesson from the courage that you displayed as an elected, because it's easier to say yes than to say no. And you displayed a tremendous amount of courage in following your heart and following your passion. So, thank you for the example you set in that, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
I'd just add, Michael, you and I have known each other for a long time. This recognition's certainly well-deserved. You've had a passion for education, all education issues, and representing Dublin City Schools, representing the Worthington Schools and the suburb there from whence you came. Really appreciate that. I know you took... You made some very... You took some difficult positions in spite of party lines and probably had some fallout for you in the long run. You're probably more Kasich-like, you know, kind of going one... And to that end, I appreciate the fact that you did what you always thought was right, and that's a rare thing in today's political world. So, I think we'll see more of you in the future. Hopefully, you'll run again for another position, but as you and I both know, nobody knows how personal it is putting your name on a ballot until you actually do it. So, thank you for your service.
Kathy?
I appreciate your positivity. I mean, I've not known you all that long, but any time where you're out and about, no matter what the issue that a resident would have, you were positively passionate about helping them get that resolved. And we could certainly use more of that. So, we'll miss you in that, and we thank you for that.
Jane?
Yeah, I have to say, and I told Mike this story many times, when you first ran, it was in August, and I answered my door, and there he stood. He looked like he was going to pass out. It was so hot. And I had never done this before, and I said, "Come on in and sit at my table and have some lemonade," and we had the best conversation. I'm so thrilled that you're in education, because when running for council myself, I remembered how you just came to the door, and that's what it takes, knocking on the door. You impressed me so much by the enthusiasm and the passion you had for being involved in public service. And I think you'll be able to teach all these young up-and-comings that public service is really a gift you give. So, I'll never forget that you came to my door. I followed your whole career. I loved what you've done for all of us. Thank you for all of your service and for the lessons that you taught, and you'll continue to teach. And so, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mike, for everything. You know, you always showed up.
Thank you.
You always showed up. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So, I would echo everything that everyone has said here. I think the Duane Administration has gotten a good egg, for sure. And just a quick, personal thank you. I was very new to all of this, coming into council, and every time I saw you, you very honestly would say, "How's it going?" Knowing that sometimes it wasn't going to be going great. And you always encouraged me and always said, "Hey, if you ever need anything, give me a call." And I always believed you. So, on a personal level, I thank you very much for helping me in my first years on council. It was just a tremendous comfort to know that I had some folks out there who could give me some advice and talk me through difficult things. We've been very lucky to have you. You're going to be amazing in your upcoming job, and I have no doubt that we will be seeing more of you as well.
Mayor, if I could, I just have two final remarks, and that is, being able to serve Dublin has been a special privilege for me. I think that compared to many municipalities across the state of Ohio, that you really raise the bar and the expectation from an economic development standpoint, from a way that you treat local elected officials. The city's been always very gracious, always included us in events. We get invited to the annual city meeting. The pathway of communication has been very strong. I was fortunate, being a guy from Worthington, you know, I had a... I felt an extra burden to try to work hard to serve Dublin, because I wasn't from here and I wanted to earn your respect. I really felt that way. But you embraced me, and I really appreciate that. You were all very supportive of me. I think many communities are jealous of what you've been able to achieve in Dublin. I would just say, keep it up. Whatever you're doing, it works. The community events are amazing. Everything's so well-produced. I bought a 1928 Ford Model A truck, because all the politicians were admonished not to drive late-model vehicles. It wasn't interesting for the populace and for the kids that we should build floats and do something really special, and I took that to heart. I did not want to just drive an SUV with a sign on the side of it, so I bought an old truck, and it almost broke down in a parade. But it was an amazing experience, and now we take it out with the kids to get ice cream and do all of those things. So, you've always set the expectations so high, and I think it's really a testament to you. The other thing that I want to say is, I will always be your friend and I'll be your advocate, even though I won't be your representative. And I've talked to my successor, Dr. Beth Liston, about the whole litany of issues that exist, many of which were left on the cutting-room floor. School funding, the SERP issue, there's so many things that are not going to go away. They're just going to keep coming back and back and back, and that is the nature of the State House, as you know. And so, you're going to have to be vigilant on those issues, and I can help you understand them, and I'm always going to be a resource, and I can connect you with people, and I can connect your now state representative with those people and help you think tactically through how to be effective at the State House. I want you to win. So, thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mike.[726.56][726.56](applause). The next item on our agenda gives me the opportunity to... You know those people that you come across that you're always glad to see them coming? No matter what environment you see them in, you see them coming across the room, and you're always glad to see them coming. The next item on the agenda allows me to welcome at least one of those people for me to the stand, someone I'm always glad to see coming, and that's Nicholas LaRocca, the Chief Operating Officer at the Memorial, and Mike McKee, the Director of Village Operations at Muirfield. If you guys want to come on up to the podium? These guys came up with an idea and approached the city a while ago, and when you hear the idea, and when Chris and I met with Nicholas about it, it was kind of a, "I can't believe we..." It's such a good idea. "Good idea. I can't believe we haven't already done that." And Nicholas, maybe you can set the stage for us. What caused you to make this request and tell everybody what the request was?
Well, we were here some time ago. You all kindly did a proclamation in honor of Pandell Savick, one of our founders, and the chairman of the Memorial Tournament. We lost Pandell in June last year. And you drive around Dublin, and you see these great things that you do to recognize the pillars of the community, people that have made a difference. So, we wrote the idea of maybe honoring Pandell's memory and a portion of Memorial Drive being Pandell Savick Way, and you've graciously agreed, and we're kindly here to accept it. And thank you very much from the bottom of our heart for this, because Pandell meant so much to us. And this will make sure that his memory lives on for a long time.
Great. And I have a proclamation here I'd like to read real quick. Whereas, Pandell Savick is one of the founders of the PGA Tour Memorial Tournament, which takes place annually at Muirfield Village Golf Club in Dublin. Whereas, Savick served as the tournament's inaugural chairman, eventually becoming its general chairman, Amaretis. And whereas, on June 12th, 2018, following the 43rd plane of the Memorial Tournament, Pandell Savick passed away. And whereas, the Memorial Tournament, which was founded by Jack Nicholas, Bob Hoag, Ivory Young, and Pandell Savick, brings international exposure for the city of Dublin by attracting tens of thousands of visitors each year and being broadcast to cities around the world. And whereas, each year during tournament time, the entire Columbus region benefits from the top-tier golf event with a steady performance... Several years ago, revealing that the annual economic impact yearly is $36.5 million. That's unbelievable. And whereas, the tournament has also contributed greatly to local charities and organizations, including raising more than $20 million for Nationwide Children's Hospital. And whereas, the great success of the tournament has led to more conventions, tourism, and business development opportunities. And whereas, thanks to the outstanding facilities and world-renowned hospitality of the tournament, Dublin is the only city in the world to have hosted the top three international golf competitions, the Ryder Cup, Solheim Cup, and the President's Cup. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of a grateful city council, do hereby proclaim the honorary street signs shall be erected for a period of 10 years at the southeast corners of Memorial Drive and Muirfield Drive and the Memorial Drive and Dublin Road, designating Pandell Savick Way, to recognize and celebrate Pandell Savick's role in the founding of the Memorial Tournament and the honor and prestige that it has brought to the city of Dublin, Ohio. Signed this 22nd day of January 2019.[935.81][935.81](applause). Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we have... Should I give this to them?
I think so.
Well, it's right here. What else am I going to do with it? There you go. Is this the actual sign?
You know, Mayor, we ought to put a buckeye leaf on there on one edge, a small...
So, Dana, do we have... Nicholas, whoever, do we have plans? How do we... When are we going to hang these things?
Nicholas has to put that up. Yeah, we'll get the cherry picker and hang it up. Just two quick remarks. You know, this great city gets recognized for that seven days of the tournament and 800 million households worldwide on television. So, what goes on in this town is seen around the world, and 800 million homes. So, be proud of that. And number two, just a side story on Pandell, when they were getting ready to... You know, Pandell was the real boots-on-the-ground with Jack. Jack wasn't here. Jack was busy playing golf and winning major championships. Pandell was the true boots-on-the-ground. He called his good friend Governor Rhodes, who they played golf with many times at Sciota, and he said, "Gov, I need your help." And he goes, "Come down and see me downtown." So, Pandell went downtown to see the governor, and he said, "We're going to build a club." He goes, "Okay, great." He said, "We're going to have a tournament." And the governor goes, "Okay, sure. Tournament, fine." And he said, "We're going to need some help." And Governor Rhodes said, "Pandell, whatever you need." So, they started out with the state police helped out and caissons of water, because none of those things had happened yet. So, give Pandell the credit, because he was the true boots-on-the-ground to get the thing started. So, we're very proud of him.
And what are the plans, Dana? When do we hang this?
So, I believe, Nicholas, what we intend to do is dedicate this at the same day or somewhere around the Legends luncheon and when the Nicholas's will...
That's right. The Nicholas's will be in town in April for our Legends Lunch and maybe do it and coincide with the same time of everything going on that day in April, April 17th, I think it is.
Yeah, I think that's the target, and obviously, whatever works for the family and yourselves, we'll do whatever works.
This is fantastic. Yes. That'd be great.
And I know Chris was instrumental in these conversations. Chris, say anything? Comment on this whole situation? I would say that, as I spoke with each of the council member, it was unequivocal, absolutely. Almost, I can't believe we haven't done this already.
Well, thank you very much. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much. This means a lot.
It's just fun to honor someone who had such a profound impact. I mean, Dublin is a big part of who we are, is the Memorial Tournament. You know, we... Our conversation was about the characters in life that we come across in Pandell. He would be up at the top of that list of being a tremendous character.
Absolutely.
And it's kind of becoming a lost art in our society, and we just need to celebrate and cherish these great characters that had tremendous accomplishments.
Thank you.
The distinct pleasure, when his book came out, you took me up there to his house, and we sat in that study, and he talked about playing in the Rose Bowl.
Right.
It was just a... He was just a true gentleman, a very...
The council general was here, too, from Detroit, from Macedonia.
Yeah.
Which was nice, too. That was a fun day.
Really unbelievable guy. Anybody else want to comment? Christina, you got anything? Okay. Well, we'll look forward to hanging that up, Nicholas.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Joanne, Shelley, where is she? There she is. Hi.
Hello.
You have an introduction to make, I understand.
I do. First, I'd like to thank you all for supporting the mobility study, and I wanted to thank the council members who came to the launch of the Senior Circulator. I really appreciate your attendance. And just to remind you that there's a memo in your packet that outlines the details of how the circulator's operating within the planning department. And then I also wanted to introduce Ryan McManus, who is the founder and CEO of Share.
Thank you, Joanne. Mayor Peterson, Members of City Council, City Manager McDaniel, and Michelle Crandall, thank you all for allowing me to come here to talk to you about the Senior Circulator. On behalf of our team at Share, we're really honored to get to have the opportunity to serve the seniors and disabled here in Dublin, and it's quite innovative for your community to take up a project like this.
On buttons on the other side.
There we go. So, we've now had seven days of operation for the Senior Circulator here in Dublin, and we had over 300 seniors who showed up to learn about this program. And it's a culmination of several years of work by your city planners to really understand the mobility challenges of everyone in this community. And your cities came up with a mobility mission, and that really revolves around your goals as a community, to be a great place to live and to be inclusive for all members of your community. And we get to begin this program by serving the growing number of seniors in Dublin, as well as the disabled, and helping them get to places that they enjoy. This is destinations like grocery stores, retailers. It's not just going to healthcare. This is going to the places that make them enjoy their life. You know, there's a direct correlation between the frequency that you get out of your home and longevity. And so, as you look to build a great place for seniors to age, whether they decide to live in community or they decide to live at home, this program is going to be the beginning of showing how transportation provides access that makes Dublin a great place for those When you surveyed the seniors in your community, the one challenge to access those places was around transportation. And so, your city planners decided to prioritize a program to bring a circulator that would stop at the senior communities and go to these popular destinations. Now, this is Ayasha Rabani, and unfortunately, the video's not going to play for us today. But she spoke about her mother, Christina, and in the video, she said, "It's going to change her mom's life that she has this type of transportation." And that really gets me going, because I started this company to be able to make an impact. And transportation, I couldn't possibly think of a bigger problem to try to solve. And it's great that we get to serve seniors, and it's... I'm really honored that we get to do it here in Dublin. And so, the pilot program is a six-month project. We started it in January. It will run through June, and it provides opportunities for seniors to get to popular destinations. We're beginning with a fixed route shuttle, and it's going to ultimately move to dynamic, where the seniors will schedule their ride to say where they want to go, and we're only going to use your resources when there's a senior that wants to go there. It's really great access to transportation, but only when you need it. We're also going to engage with retailers, restaurants, destinations like Tuttle Mall and Avery Square and Bridge Park. These destinations are paying to be sponsors. That provides increased volume of rides, and they're also getting a benefit through a promotion or a deal when they go to one of these destinations. And we're going to show how transportation creates an increase in economic activity. We're also gathering a lot of data. Share, we're a software and transportation company in one. We have an unmatched amount of data about our drivers, the operation of the service, and the demand, and we're going to be sharing this with the city to make better decisions about transportation. A little bit about Share real quickly. We're a Columbus-based startup. We started two years ago. We did our first rides in December of 2017, and this month, we'll do over our 100,000th ride. Our objective is to create the safest transportation service so riders can trust who's picking them up. All of the drivers are background-checked, trained, W-2 professional drivers that work for our company, and all the vehicles are part of our fleet, and over half of our vehicles are wheelchair-accessible. We have some vehicles that have six seats, some that have 14, and we can scale up or down based on the demand. And just to show you the boundaries of this program, this map stars some of the popular destinations, going from Dublin, different national church residences, facilities, Sunrise, Brookdale, and Friendship Village. We have three circle loops that are running throughout the city. So, from any of those communities, you can get to any of the destinations. We're running three days a week from 10:00 to 2:00. This is an example of one of the loops. If you wanted a ride just for fun, we've had a few people do that. It takes about 60 minutes to go around. But this means that from any of the destinations you go to, you know that within an hour, you're going to have another ride. And we have a growing list of destinations that have signed on to be partners. This is Route Number Two. Takes 120 minutes. Now, these routes might change. We don't need to do a study. We don't need to change bus stops. We're just going to change dynamically. That's one of the powers of Share's software. And number three, this loop is 115 minutes. So, you see, it goes to the southern part of Dublin all the way to Perimeter Loop. Here's an example of one of the organizations we're working with. It's Ufit. They're a disabled gym. They help from very young kids all the way to seniors have a great experience working out, and we're providing access to that gym for a variety of individuals that range from seniors to disabled. Getting to hear from the parents about what this means, that they have access, was really incredible. This is a list of some of the retailers that have joined the program. When... Any retailer that's working with us, you'll see one of these window clings, so seniors know that they can get a deal here. And the green card, we provide to all of the seniors. We have a phone number that they can use. They're not required to use a smartphone app to be able to ride Share. You might have seen recently a really great piece in the Dublin 90 where it featured a little bit about the program. We're working really closely with the city to provide marketing that works with the communities so that seniors are aware of this. My ask to all the seniors that came to the program last week was, "Please tell friends," because that's how they're going to trust this service. If you ride and get somebody else to ride, this program's really going to take off. You can see how great the turnout was. This was featured in the Saturday edition of the Dispatch as well, in the print edition. Our ridership is growing, and one day, we had 90 riders. This is when they were going to the event. But, you know, we started very low, and we're getting to 10. Overall, our objective is to increase ridership per hour. So, only doing four to five riders a day is by no means what our objective is. We want to be doing that on an hourly basis. And as we work with adding more communities, we've only added about one-third of the senior communities in Dublin, and as we create more awareness with seniors, these numbers will surely grow. We're constantly surveying to understand how the seniors feel about the transportation, and so, this helped us define what type of service do we have to have, when is it going to operate, and where do we want to go. And so, we really listened to our customer and built the program that was needed for So, we have a list of additional attractions that we want to add, and so, I'm sure city council can be influential to different organizations, to have them participate. We would like to see all of the senior communities join this program. And after the pilot, the objective is to be able to reach into seniors that are living at home. And our dynamic scheduled model of microtransit is going to be able to do that. Together, Share and Dublin are going to make you a great place to live for seniors, the disabled, for everybody. We're also going to make this a great place to work. So, next month, we'll be starting a workforce circulator that will be going from different stops to different employers in the area. I'll come back and talk to you about that more. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from council?
You might mention the age of those who can ride Share.
Well, our service, we serve from four-year-olds to those that are well into their 90s. And so, this program is really designed for seniors, I believe, 55 and over.
Right. But you are taking some disabled, though, you said.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, that's great. 55 and older, you all.
Yeah. Kathy, did you have something?
And just to be clear, at this point, there is no fee to ride the Share?
There is no fare to the rider for this.
There's no fare to the rider to ride the SHARE. Try to say that quickly. Other communities across the country, or other communities that you've worked in, can you share a little bit? No pun intended, but yes.
So, when we started out, we focused on going directly to employers and schools and senior communities. And so, this is the first government that we're working with. Now, it's also very novel for a city to undertake this project. There are other examples of buses that run in communities for seniors, but there's really never been a program like this. So, it's quite innovative. I look forward to sharing the results of this and seeing the program grow.
So, I would also encourage you to work with Michelle as we work with Centaro on creating the hub, which is a part of our aging-in-place strategy, so that that information is part of that information that's given out to seniors and their caregivers throughout the hub. And that'll be a really critical piece, because you talk about trust, and it really is that word of mouth. And seniors, and I know my mom is definitely in this group, tend to really either trust what I tell her, what their family says, or what their friends are saying. So, I think you're 100% right about that.
Great. We'll definitely work closely with Centaro.
Centaro is, sorry, Ryan. Centaro has been one of our partners. They're not a buy-in partner, but they are a partner. Christine and I have been working together for, as soon as we discovered each other four years ago. But she's been very instrumental in guiding some of the initial parameters as we launched to understand, using the framework and other, and Centaro themselves. We've met with them a couple times now, and they are one of our partners.
You know, as you well know, in our budget, we have allocated for this six-month trial period. Are we collecting data? You talked about the incentives from different organizations for the seniors or whoever would ride this to participate in, in retailers. Are we tracking that data so that we could possibly find more funding partners? It's easy to find partners that want to partner with you in the sense they'd like to promote and help facilitate. The funding partners are certainly far more difficult to come by. Are we tracking enough information that we would hope to glean some funding partners to make this not a six-month trial period, but a permanent?
Absolutely.
So, part of the requirements or the response to the RFP was that we identify cost-sharing partners, or that the respondent and winner. So, SHARE is required to actually identify cost-sharing partners, in addition to give us specific breakdowns in the cost per rider, so that we can understand how much it's actually costing the city, not in this lump-sum scenario, but in the real world, and then identifying the financial backing that we need in order to make sure that it's an ongoing service.
Do we have any data about what the expenditure per entity would be in order for it to be something that would encourage them to go and be a funding partner? Do we know what that threshold is? Is it, you know, 12, 14, 20 acquisitions a day, or a dollar figure, or whatever that might be?
Well, it's going to vary really by destination, based on the value of the individual coming there. A movie ticket might only be worth sharing a couple of $1 or $2, where a fine meal that you might spend $30 to $50 might be worth a little bit more. So, I think on a per-location basis, it's going to vary. Christine Gross on our team has been leading this project, where she is working with the retailers to get a POS code. And when somebody comes in and is from the circulator, they have the green card, they're going to get a certain discount, and we're going to be able to track that. And that's the data that we want to be able to show the retailers, to say, if you sponsor this, we'll be able to bring people to you. And then, we'll need to work with each one to make sure that we set the price for them to be on the destination based on the value that they can get. So far, in about a month of activity engaging with destinations, we're able to do 14% more rides.
So, do we have any capability to tap into the senior services, you know, those entities that are listed on your property tax bill, the governmentally-funded entities? Do we have any opportunity to partner with them as well on this?
Absolutely. So, the funding sources for senior transportation, and really anybody who's getting transportation, that could be federal, local-funded, insurance-paid, there's a lot of silos. And what SHARE is going to do is, we're going to try to bring all of that together, because there's some rides that could be to a doctor, that may have an existing funding source based on somebody's insurance, their age, where they live, or based on some types of service they've done. And so, we want to look for all of the existing funding sources and stack it. Our model is to share the cost, and we're going to share it based on everybody that gets a benefit for it.
So, you don't just track where they are going, but you are tracking, in fact, why they are going there?
Well, that's really, it's important for us to be getting to the point where we have profiles for the rider, so we start to understand their individual needs and how we can help them better. The intent of the ride is really important. Why are they going somewhere? That's when we're going to be able to start matching up the funding sources.
Well, I really appreciate and thank you for doing that. You know, this is something we certainly want to be able to continue for a very long time, but it is going to be crucial, critical really, for us to find funding partners and auxiliary partners that'll help us stretch our budget dollars from a six-month pilot to a permanent opportunity.
Absolutely. I look forward to being partners in that.
Anything else from council?
I just have one question, just to help our seniors. And I attended that, the senior event, and this was a question. So, some seniors may not be located at these places, but you will have sandwich signs. So, if someone wants to go to that place and catch a ride, can you just quickly say how seniors can find you along the route and how they can use you if they don't live in one of these six or seven places?
Sure. If they go to this website we have listed, which is ridewithshare.com, they'll see all of those destinations. So, they don't have to just start their ride at the senior community. They could pick it up. And so, we have sandwich boards that are sitting out in front of all of our listed destinations. It's a big green sign. You can see it if you go to your recreation center. And so, that really, that's where we want them to meet when the vehicle arrives. That's where they'll be dropped off, and that's how they can learn about those destinations.
Anything else from council? Thank you, Ryan, very much for covering everything that you're doing. All right. Next on our agenda is Columbus 2020. Kenny McDonald, who is the president and chief economic officer, is going to give us an update.
You stole my thunder. I was going to introduce him.
Well, go ahead.
So, yeah, so we have Kenny with us tonight. This one? Is it not on? Oh, there we go. So, Kenny McDonald is here this evening. Just to give you a little background, Columbus 2020 covers 11 counties. Dublin is an investor. He has spent the better half of a decade getting all of the local communities onboard, working toward common goals in economic development. So, they are our regional partner. We've traveled the world with them, and he's here to give you an update.
Thank you. Fantastic. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Always great to be in Dublin. We actually had our board meeting here tonight. You'd be happy to know that everybody knows we're pressed against the boardroom wall at Crawford-Hoying, looking out across the river, admiring what you've built here. Actually, several of the board members live in Dublin, and a bunch of other people actually hadn't been to the Bridge Street yet. So, it was a great opportunity to kind of highlight a great development that's happening here, and good to be having our entire crew up here today. I thought I would just share a couple of things with you. Again, just coming from a board meeting, so thinking about some of these things. I just can't say how much I appreciate the council and the staff's direct involvement in the strategy over the last nine years now. I remember being in this council room, I think in 2011, for the first time, and sort of laying out a concept before we had actually built the organization and the staff to go out and do this work on an everyday basis. And maybe just a bit of an update on the strategy. We all know that central Ohio is doing quite well, but to provide maybe just a bit of a context to that, and maybe reinforce that doing things differently occasionally, like we did and made a decision to do in 2010, works. We are the number-one metro area in the Midwest for population growth. 43,000 people moved into our region last year. A good majority of them are moving to places like Dublin. I always think that that's just, you know, roughly the size of Dublin moved into the market last year. Now, we ate up every one of those people and put them all to work. We could probably use even thousands more with the labor crunch we have. But we are growing in population. That's critically important, and the kind of community that you're building here is one of the reasons that is happening. Number one in GDP growth. So, what we're producing out of our region is more valuable, far more valuable than it was in, at the beginning of the decade. In fact, our GDP is growing by over $35 billion in the last nine years. Unprecedented growth in what we're producing here. Our top 10 millennial growth in the country. So, we stack up against Austin and Nashville and all these boom cities that you hear about, and we have to sometimes remember that we are one of those locations in the country. So, incredibly important. And the second-highest density of millennials in our region is in the northwest corner of Franklin County, here in the Dublin market, if you look at census tracts. Number one in job growth in the entire Midwest, and we're usually only the only dot north of the Mason-Dixon when it comes to that. And so, we're very proud of that and want to thank the community for investing in the strategy and the work every day to make that happen. Our team has done about over 600 projects over the last nine years, and some of the most notable projects that we've done have been here, maybe for various reasons. You know, obviously, the Amazon project a few years ago was a big deal that, these days goes unnoticed because it's kind of a quiet facility that sits here, but it continues to expand and grow, and billions of dollars are being invested by that company. And I'm proud to say a lot of that is actually here in Dublin, thanks to the great work that you all did with us on that project. Even last year, Honda, Kahatu, Wistec, which is a great R&amp;D project automotive supplier, Viva, Fast Switch, so many companies that are expanding here, and we're working with your staff on every day, and they're a great staff. It's true every year that we have a handful of companies that we've helped expand or bring to the market, and they find a home in Dublin, and then are here for decades, creating jobs and investment. You should be very proud of the team that you have in Dublin. They're respected, not just among our staff, but they're respected throughout Ohio. I think that's really important. A lot of people see Dublin as the premier city in how you do things in economic development, and we can attest that your staff is actually not just as implementing the strategy that you've developed and continue to refine, but they're doing and innovating upon that every day, thanks to the good work and leadership you have here. And when they're representing the region, whether we're in California, or we're on the ground in Japan, talking to existing businesses that invest here in Dublin, they are all, they're great representatives of the region and the state and your city. Just a few more things. You know, we put millions of dollars to work every year to market this region. Dublin is marketed all over the world, perhaps more than we know, because so much of our marketing is done externally. Increasingly, we're sending out messages to people and not just companies. So, we said 43,000 people moved here, and we all know so many of our employers still have a lot of open positions. So, we're going direct to the market with, in high-tech centers in Austin and Nashville and Dallas, Texas, and then certainly in Silicon Valley in New York, saying, "We have terrific communities for you to live in, where you can buy a home, raise a family, and have a very high quality of life, and also have a selection of great employers from Fortune 500 companies," to some of the biggest unicorns in the country are right here in our region. So, your community is being marketed maybe in multiple ways, not just as a value proposition to companies, to lure them to come in our shores, but actually talented people to join us as well. I know you'll hear from Rev One later tonight, and Rev One is a terrific partner of ours. I would say every company that is coming out of the facility or invested in by Rev One eventually becomes a Columbus 2020 partner as well, and somebody that we are actually trying to bring resources to as they grow and add jobs and facilities and things like that. And there's plenty of examples in Dublin of that. So, thank you for investing in entrepreneurship, because those become customers, and sort of the lifecycle of that company starts to really add up to major jobs and investment over periods of five and 10 years. Thank you for your partnership on the Leaderboard Breakfast, something that we started, I want to say, five, six years ago now. Every year, we have a facility to just, or an event to remind us of the power of the business of sports. Great, you know, a great example of success here in Dublin with the Memorial Tournament, but so many other things. And we highlight that and bring that together as a region. And I know when we started that, that was a big deal, to actually bring, you know, Columbus 2020 and a little bit of Columbus into the Dublin tournament, the Memorial Tournament. But that has become, you know, something that is a must-do every year and a highlight of the year. And finally, I'll just give you a little insight of how we're thinking about the future. So, obviously, we're getting pretty close to our expiration date. No plans of going anywhere anytime soon. We need to continue this work, obviously. And we're holding two competing thoughts in our head at the same time. One is that this is a region of great opportunity, and I would tell you that I think, and many of our leadership, including our Fortune 500 CEOs, think that this is the end of the beginning, that all of the work that we've done to date, together as a region, has set the table for unprecedented growth and prosperity, and actually for us to do some different things. The second idea is that everything is changing, and literally, everything is at risk. So, you know, we should be challenging ourselves to say, overnight, companies can go away. Companies that we've counted on to employ our people, from the small business on Main Street to the major company in the business park in your community, can go away really quite quickly. And we have to plan for that and constantly be diversifying, and we can't stop the work of getting better and asking for people's business and their growth. We need to leverage things that we didn't have when we started the decade, like the 33 corridor, which is now a shining example, actually an international example of innovation. If we can make that fully operational, it'll be one of the world's best places for autonomous and vehicle-to-infrastructure testing. Can't wait for that to happen. The campus at OU and what you can do with that, that tremendous investment that this community made in that partnership is going to do nothing but benefit this entire region. That's something that was unimagined in 2010, when we started this strategy, and now it's something that we talk about constantly as a vehicle for innovation for our entire region, by the way. And OU has actually become a great partner of ours in a lot of different ways that they would never would have become but for your investment in the university. And then, please, 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 keep investing in yourselves. I just keep, every time I come to the community, I see things that the community and the business community have partnered on and invested in. A great example of that is obviously Bridge Street, but I continue to see that across land and infrastructure that you're building across the entire community. So, thank you. We have to have places for people to actually locate. And then, I will just say that we're working very, very hard for the next six months to come out with new goals, new ambitions, that hopefully reflect the stakeholder meetings we had with really, probably over a couple hundred people from the Dublin community probably interacted with us in some form or fashion through the Dublin Chamber, through your Economic Development Group, and then from our corporate community, as we reached out to hundreds and hundreds of people last year. We want to reflect the ambitions of them, not just to grow, but to also address some of the inequities and the disparities that we have across our region, too. And we've, it's very clear that about two-thirds of our region and residents of our region have come along and benefited from the growth, and still a third are, you know, pretty disconnected from that prosperity. And we're going to work pretty hard, not just to achieve the growth and maybe raise the bar a little bit there, but to make sure that some of those disparities go away that is eroding some of the good things that are happening. I'll just end with, again, saying thank you to your, for your leadership, for the great staff that you field every day that helps us do our work, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ken. Certainly are some pretty encouraging statistics, but they come from a lot, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Questions from council?
Hey.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you very much for that update. What, you know, one of the things that impresses me, and we had the opportunity to spend a little bit of time together here last month, is the metric-driven, data-driven approach that you take to things, and the organization is taking to things. I appreciate that, the measurement. So, as we're thinking about this changing future and this opportunity, what are some of the measures and the metrics that you guys are looking to, or that you think, gee, as a community like Dublin, we should be finding ways to measure and manage to?
So, it's a lot of what we're studying right now. We had, we spent about seven months last year actually looking at regional comparative statistics, the Columbus metro area versus 34 other places that were between a million and 3 million people. And there are things in there that are very encouraging. We ranked really high on many of the things I mentioned, and those are great things to mention. But we still have, not in the city of Dublin, but across our region, broadband connectivity and stuff is really lacking, stuff like that. So, how we're thinking about metrics in the future is, jobs will still be important. And while we have a great job market, very low unemployment rate today, net new jobs is... new jobs is still going to be important. How many actual jobs are we actually keeping and growing in our community? We'll have to continue to measure that. Well, we've measured per capita income. We think median household income is probably a little bit measure, better measure. We want to start measuring things like, you know, that maybe we're not directly working on but are impacting our growth, like Housing Affordability Index. We're taking, keeping a very close eye on that. That's now on our board dashboard, and we were just showing. Our poverty rate across the region has went down 3%. So, went from 16% to 13%. But that poverty, if I look at maps of Franklin County, which at the beginning of the decade was more concentrated than it is, is now actually getting across Franklin County into our suburban locations. We want to make sure we're measuring and understanding that. Mobility, what you were just talking about, housing, where that is and stuff, those are all important components. So, expect a bigger dashboard from us, not just about jobs and investment, although they'll still be really important.
So, what do millennials want?
Well, my household is Gen Z, so I'll, I'll, I have to worry about that first. I think we're building what the millennials want, is a diverse economy where they can have a lot of different career choices, a lot of different industries, and lifestyle choices, right? And it isn't one thing. I, I always remind everybody about what I just mentioned, that Dublin is the second highest concentration of millennials in our region, and a lot of people are surprised by that. But for, I think, the fourth straight year, millennials are the biggest home buyers in the country. They've moved to communities like Dublin. So, I think they ultimately, although there's, you know, there's, there's niche things, owning a home, having a good career, having paths to make a living in, in multiple ways is, is still going to be a kind of a bedrock of that, especially as the economy goes up and down.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look, you're gonna have to change your name here. Are you gonna go 2030 or what is it you're gonna do?
I'm not the marketing.
All right. Well, we'll wait to see. Thank you very much for coming in, Ken. We're moving on to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. Normally, we have, well, we do have a sheet out there for people to sign up. Nobody signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that, all you gotta do is raise your hand, you get to talk to us for five minutes about whatever you want. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove either the two amend, two items that are on the consent agenda? Without hearing anything, I make a motion that we approve those two items. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Postponed items, ordinance 89-18, Ann.
This is rezoning approximately 8.68 acres southwest of Jerome Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of the intersection with McKittrick Road from our rural district to PUD Planned Unit Development District. This is the Hamlet on Jerome for 18 single-family lots and 2.08 acres of open space and a preliminary plat in accordance with the subdivision regulations.
Claudia?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I had to step back because I brought my own pointer. I never seem to have one here. Good evening. We are here with ordinance 89-18, and you saw this at your December meeting on the 6th. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance to you all, as well as the preliminary plat, at their October 11th meeting. And then the applicant chose to postpone this ordinance from your first meeting in January. So, I have a couple of very short updates for you all that I will go over. And then the applicant and his entire team is here for answers and questions as well as I am. I had originally deleted a slide when I sent this presentation to you all earlier, but I thought it was an important tool to include in this presentation in terms of all the things we do with the Planning and Zoning Commission, in terms of giving them feedback and background on the processes that these applications go under, because there are a lot of different things that the commission sees as well as that you guys all see. So, we are in step one and two of the planned unit development process. So, we are really looking at the zoning code that this particular application is establishing as well as the preliminary development plan. So, those are the two things that you would see tonight and that the applicant is requesting to get approval for. And then really, step three is the one where the Planning and Zoning Commission would see all the final details, plans, landscaping, layouts, and so forth for this application. And just a reminder, this site is just on the south side of Jerome Road. It is bounded by Tartan West, that subdivision within the city of Dublin, and then the land to the north and sort of surrounding it, sort of northwest is within Concord Township. The preliminary development plan includes a total of 8.6 acres, and the request is to rezone that site from a rural district, which it is in right now, to the Planned Unit Development District, which is that zoning code that I had mentioned that the, the applicant is proposing. The proposal is for 18 lots. We have a total density of two units to the acre, and there are two public streets proposed. So, one is the extension of Roma Drive, which would go through the north, out of Tartan West where Corazon Drives and Roma Drive intersect, and then a new public street, which is Hamlet Court, which would access all of the new lots as well as the existing lot that is there to the west. Again, the applicant is proposing two subareas. Subarea A is the estate lot, which includes one residential lot on three acres, as well as what is considered cluster lots in this new development, which is lots on 5,000 square feet with a 45 minimum with 100 foot depth and smaller development patterns within this particular development, as well as a lot coverage that would be 70% for those particular lots. Thank you. The applicant is also proposing two reserve areas. We have a total of about almost three acres of reserve, so there is, I'm gonna go from the east side, which would be Reserve B, there on Jerome Road, which is about an acre to be owned by the city and maintained by the HOA. It generally includes setback areas that we have for those more rural roadways, as well as tree replacement areas, and there is a sidewalk also that is going to go from the lots to Jerome Road, as well as along Jerome Road. And then Reserve A is 1.6 acres, which includes a, a stormwater management pond that exists today, but will be modified with this development to take care of all of the stormwater management for this particular neighborhood. And then a couple of things that the applicant updated from your last reading of this ordinance was additional information regarding the open space treatment. And like I said, really, the details for that would be part of the final development plan that the Planning and Zoning Commission would see, but they did include a little bit more inspirational images, as well as plantings, seeding, and so forth around this And then lastly, one of the discussions that council had at the first reading was regarding parking for residents, as well as for visitors or guests of these particular residents. And the applicant did provide this study that shows that each of the lots can, A, accommodate two cars within their garage, two cars minimum within their driveway, as well as cars along the public rights of way where hydrants would not be located. So, there is a total off-street parking available that is 68 spaces, and then the on-street spaces would be 33, which is one of the concerns that council had at the first reading. So, with that, as I stated in my memo, we had 14 conditions that were part of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and the part of the zoning commission discussion. And the applicant has fulfilled many of the conditions with the ordinance that is submitted to you with the plans, as well as a text that has been updated. So, we have only a couple that are outstanding, and they would be typically addressed at the final development plan stage with the commission. So, we're about 70% in, in everything that is been accomplished thus far, as well as taking care of a sewer issue that the applicant had with a resident in Tartan West, and that's all been taken care of as of this point. So, with that, we have two requests for motions for you tonight. One is the ordinance, which is the preliminary development plan, as well as the preliminary plat that comes right alongside with that rezoning request. So, all of those conditions have also been taken care of with what is in front of you tonight. And as I said, Mr. Lorenz, who is the property owner and the developer, and his team are here tonight, and I am here also to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Claudia. Mr. Lorenz, you want to present anything, comment on anything from the last meeting? Has anything changed, any updates, anything like that?
Uh, maybe just a few things.
Please feel free to come up.
So, Dan Lorenz, 9341 Jerome Road. Help me with this. So, I'm gonna go ahead and pass these out. This is some visuals.
Thank you.
So, the first thing we thought was really important to emphasize is that we believe we build a, we're gonna be building a subdivision.
Do you have an extra one to give to Ann? Ann needs to have.
Sorry?
Do you have an extra one of those blue folders?
Yeah.
If you can go at the end. Thank you.
And I most likely have those slides if you help me get there. I probably do have them as well if the audience needs to see them. Thank you.
Yeah. So, that was really important to emphasize, kind of the quality in which we're building this subdivision based upon what we believe the, the marketplace wants and needs. So, we really believe, as Dwight's showing you here, Dwight is really the concept guy behind this development. And the idea is to have cluster homes that have a low maintenance but high quality and have kind of a layered look to them. So, we're calling these homes cottages. Is the concept, so Dwight, maybe you can speak a little bit to the, the concept a little bit further?
He can get next to the microphone so she can hear you.
Can you state your name and all for the record too?
Dwight McCabe, and my address is 7361 Courier Road, Plain City. The overall concept of this really is about having a streetscape that's much more intimate than what a typical subdivision may be. What we're looking to do is actually have a place where people, when they, you know, arrive at home, they've got a, there's some proximity to the street, but it's layered. So, you, you know, you aren't just right at someone's front door, you aren't right at their garage door. There's landscaping and features within landscaping that are up next to the sidewalk that provide that bit of privacy and just, you know, enough separation from the street, and also that addresses that, as we talked about the last time, kind of what happens between houses. And, and so, having just a, a really pleasant street experience in a small cluster community like this is, was the prime principle. The other thing is, we, we didn't want to see a, a environment where, on an ongoing basis, as you're coming into this community, all you're seeing is cars parked on the street. What we're looking for is a place where, and this is typically gonna be more empty nester type occupants, and so they'll come home, their car will be in the garage, it'll be off the street, and it just creates just a more pleasant sort of environment. If you think about, if you're familiar with, Rivers Gate is a project that's over on Fishing Road, or Fishing, yeah, Fishing Road, over along the river, the side of the river, very similar to that in terms of concept, just in terms of what that streetscape's all about. The other aspect of this then is that these, these are folks who have had big homes typically. They've had the maintenance issues of big homes, they've had, you know, they spend their Saturday mornings and, and whatever, mowing lawns and dealing with things. That's not the objective here. The objective is to come home, live in a place that that's all taken care of for you, and you can just be comfortable to have a little bit of outdoor space in the back and just have a nice pleasant surrounding. The, and, and then the other component of this is, there's some uniqueness about this particular location. There's great public space that pretty much surrounds the, this property. There is great Dublin House property to the south of this, which is really a reserve area, so it's, if you go out there today, it's growing back and soon to be a full-fledged woods that backs up to this. So, this is a very protected environment. So, if you think about it from the thoroughfare streets, Jerome Road, and the entry road into, into Tartan, those, you'll have very limited view of what these homes actually are, even in the long term, in the wintertime. There's gonna be quite a bit of vegetative surrounding. So, it's, it's designed to be intimate, that's the idea, make it a close place, but yet they're, you know, they're not common wall, they're private homes, and that's, that's the fundamental principle behind it. Very high quality, these, these aren't Epcun projects. The interesting juxtaposition is, there's an Epcun project going across the road as we speak. That project is being quickly received and quickly developed. The sales there are high, as Epcun's really seen anywhere in the region. That's just telling you there's a high demand for scaled-down, more intimate housing. And so, this is the, is the upgrade to that kind of a product. People expect that are gonna move in here, they're moving out of homes that are really high quality, they're taking that quality here and just in a more compact environment. So, happy to answer any questions.
Let me go, go ahead and add to that. That Epcun development across the street is three units per acre, and it's, it's not in Dublin, it's in Concord Township. I think it's also important, on the one slide showing our home in the background, I think there was a question about how does that inter, how do these two interplay? I think it's obviously a, a beautiful home and adds to the community. It's not like it's a sore thumb out there and not being, not part of the community. So, we really, my wife and I really wanted it to be that way. So, those are the first two slides. I hope it answers a question about kind of the quality of the community we're really trying to develop here and have it be a place where, as those empty, as those, as the millennials move into, into Dublin and buy those homes, the big homes, a place for the people that live in those big homes to, to stay in Dublin. The next slide, Claudia did a great job showing that. So, the, the other slide we had with regards to the, around the pond, Claudia, just emphasized that there was a question about how do the people access the pond? And so, we went ahead and put the detail of a basically a ramp, a, a, basically a gentle ramp down to the, to the pond with some, some like stone benches that people sit on and observe the pond. So, we're trying to address the question you all had about just how do we make that space usable and connected to the community, so that we've come up with those details. The other slot, the next page that you have on there is the, kind of the part that we really presented this a year and a half ago to Planning and Zoning. I'm talking about referring to this slide here, Claudia, you, and this really tries to address the issue of density more broadly to the community. So, what, what this is really showing is that when you take, even if, when you look at our two units per acre, if you would take out the, the common area, then you would basically end up with a, a density that's very similar to the other, so we have a pointer here. And we had one.
You can throw a mine, you have to give it back.
Yeah. So, what we're trying to emphasize is that, you know, the, this, the.
Get good on that one.
So, this group right here, you can see there's 4.12 units per acre. When you take out the common area here, it's 4.85 units per acre. Here is 3.97. We're at 4.84. So, what we're saying is, look, even if you take our home out of it, you know, you take the common area out of it, this is what the density is, very similar to these areas that already been approved and in place and functioning very well in the, in the community right around us. So, that's, we presented this back to Planning and Zoning, and, you know, they, they believed in, in the, they understood the concept and voted us ahead. in, in the, they understood the concept and voted us ahead. The last page we have in there is, is a just scenario showing, there was a constant question about trees, right? How many, how are we doing our best to save the trees? You can see that, once again, that in the vast majority of the site we're working, there aren't enough trees, right? And there's nothing like we're building in these woods here, right? We're building, so we're, so we're, our driveway comes down here, and so we're losing some trees along our driveway. We're keeping these big trees out here, we made special plans to, to keep them, accommodate them. We're losing some trees around the pond, mainly because we got, we have to rebuild the pond for storm, stormwater, and we're losing some trees, we're bringing the sewer in back here. But other than that, we really, I believe, the site is very well designed, we built, we've designed it around the trees that are there to try to minimize the loss of trees. So hopefully that addresses the issues that we had, that you guys had last in December. So with that, we'll answer any other questions.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Starting, Jane, you got any comments?
I do. You know, most important thing, and this, this came through planning and zoning, and you made a comparison, the density is, is pretty typical, and I think it is. I tried to measure it against our community plan and the land use principles. And so, as I went through it, I really felt that, as we looked at most of the land use principles, that, that you met most of them, actually. You really did, and I commend you for that. The ones that I, that I felt that probably could use some tweaking, and you've addressed them, and they'll come back to planning and zoning in the, in the next step, is when, is the sensitivity to establishing the land use in open spaces. And, and in the trade-off in allowing a little more, more density, you ask for something in return, and that is to, to create areas, let's see, that, that are designed so that the natural features and the greenway systems and the open vistas are really appreciated by the people who live in a more denser area. So the focus that I think for me, as I look at this, is that the trade-off is such that, and I really appreciate the fact that you've utilized the pond area so that it's more usable. Because it's nice to have passive areas, but one of the things the community plan looks for is social connectivity. And as you say, being on the street and having that close proximity and walking down and seeing your neighbor is one thing. To have another place to go and talk and sit and think, or take your bike or take a walk, and having a social connection instead of just a passive connection is how we're trying to begin to retrofit our outskirts. Without that, you just simply have another little cul-de-sac, right?
Exactly. That's what we're trying to build, is that great community feel.
Right, and that is, and that needs to be an intentional design element that allows you to bring people to spaces that become socially connected. So I, I, I think as we get a little bit far forward, for me as a council member, I'm gonna push for that kind of thing, so that you have a complete, complete neighborhood community there. And the only other thing that I would say, and this is a council policy, is the cost for the city to maintain ponds. It's not, I don't know how we address that, but it's, it's one of the things that comes up to me, that if we continue to add on these costs of maintaining these private ponds, it could become really burdensome. But as for the design, I'm, I'm looking forward to the next step as you look at some of the landscape things. That's my thought.
Jane, Kathy, anything?
A question, could we talk a little bit more about the pond? I see and appreciate the walkway, the seating area. Are we gonna be able to walk around that pond?
Yeah, there's, part of the design is, there's a bench, that, when I say bench, it's a levelled spot all the way around the pond, that's...
Can you show that?
It's basically, it's, it's really this, see, it's, okay. So it's really this flat area, so here's, here you walk down to where this is, and this, this is a flat area all the way around it. So you could easily walk, you know, stroll around that flat area, is the intent. So we have, have these rocks placed several locations around there, rocks and trees, so it has a pleasant kind of park feel to it as you're walking around.
So that's a change from last time, because last time when we discussed this, that wasn't feasible, and I'm looking at Claudia here, this...
There is currently no formal walkway, way around the pond. There is not a mulched way or a paved way around the pond. And that really has a lot to do with the state that we are in, in grading and development. However, in terms of what the discussions were with engineering and how this pond is shaping out, so to say, it's not likely that there can be a formalized walkway around this pond, just based on the grading.
So what I was saying...
So is that a yes or a no?
What I was saying is that you can walk around it.
In my engineering degree, it's a no, but Paul?
Benjamin Miller, fifty-one twenty Pleasant Chapel Road, Newark, Ohio. So as a part of the requirements for the basin, there has to be a fifteen-foot-wide maintenance berm, and it's basically flat. So you could, once you get down there, walk around it. It's grass, but it is walkable by foot.
And this, this walkway takes you down to that elevation? So you walk, and it's kind of a, you know, walk down here, and it meanders and it downs, this is that, that level spot that Ben was referring to?
Because to really, it, it seems to make this the amenity that I think we were discussing last time, that it, it wouldn't be, I'm teetering on the edge of a maintenance greenway, that there really would be walkability around there. Because we, we had talked last time about really the trade-off we're making here for density, because this is, this is pretty dense, and the community plan was that there would be the ability to do this. So is it engineering-ly feasible, is that even a phrase here, to actually put a walkway around that pond?
I am not equipped to answer that.
Yeah, it's flat.
Would that be something that would be agreeable to do? Because then that really does make that usable green space for the residents.
I, I don't think we want to have asphalt around there, but like a, basically a, a mulched area that's easily walked is, I think, would be suitable there. But also remember, the way this is designed, is, correct me wrong, Ben, the, the water when in a storm could overflow that, that berm, right? And so you, basically, then you have a maintenance issue, and we have to go back to the association and say, how much do we gotta put in there to maintain that, maintain that walkway? So one of the concepts we had was to go to the, go to our association, basically let our association decide on, is that worth it to them to, to have those kind of monies to maintain a berm around there? The last thing we want to do is put money out there that people don't appreciate or want to maintain. So partly, we're trying to find, hey, make it usable, but also make it so we're not having to maintain something like the people next to us or, with Tartan West are complaining about all the maintenance they gotta put in those towers and stuff, you know? And so we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, it just seems to me that the, the conversation was that we're making this trade-off, and I really think that space needs to be usable. So I don't know how we condition that, but for me, that would be important. And then, sort of staying on the pond here, I, I share Jane's concern about the maintenance of this pond, and for me, in the current, if I understand it, Claudia, in the, in the current proposal here, that pond would be the city's to maintain?
And I, I do have to say that those conversations came out of conversations that we always have with developers, as they're coming in to meet with us, meet with engineering, meet with parks and recreation, and figuring out what makes sense here, what makes sense as a city stormwater pond as a whole. And frankly, we had a lot of really intense discussions with the former council in twenty-fourteen, twenty-sixteen, when that was somewhat of a, I don't want to say it's a policy, because it's not, but there was definitely discussions had that not just ponds that feed into the public stormwater system, but also open spaces within these ponds or with, which the ponds are located in, are to be maintained by the city. So from, from looking at this, from an early development standpoint, we looked at it, it is not a publicly accessible open space, right? It is very much tucked back in the neighborhood, it is really only accessible to the people that are living within this area. However, it is a stormwater pond that feeds into our public system, and from a maintenance standpoint, it is very, very important that it is maintained and inspected and functions and does not mess up anything downstream.
Absolutely agree, it needs to be all of those things.
So that's where we're coming from, is all I'm saying.
But we have, we have a very mix of that, I think.
We do.
I think you gave a memo that says that, you know, third, and I'm concerned about just the, the ongoing cost of this, and, and I'm not sure for a development this size, that, that, that should be the city's burden.
Honestly, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough discussion to have, because we do field those phone calls on the opposite side of that coin, of neighborhoods much larger than that, that will say, hey, we have this to maintain, and this to maintain, and this to maintain, and can the city help us out? And I'll...
I'd like to chime in, if I may. So I had shared some information with council, similar to what Claudia had mentioned about how we got to the idea of taking on more of the pond maintenance. I think your reality here that you need to look at is, can this association that will follow on and is handed off by the developer, can they sustain the maintenance required of them? Typically, when we have taken over stormwater maintenance, it has been the result of a hardship by the association when they have come forward and asked for relief to their association regarding certain maintenance functions and costs. Over time, as we have looked at that and wrestled with those in numerous cases throughout the city over the years, one common theme kind of came up. You either mow grass, maintain hardscapes, take care of trees, take care of certain appurtenances or hardscapes, or you take care of stormwater. The one thing that came through to us was that maintain, of that list, when there's a hardship, maintaining ponds was the one that we had the most interest in as a city, because we wanted to make sure it functioned right, and was usually the consistent theme of some of these hardships that came across. Having the right resources and, and expertise in doing that is critical, and it ties into the bigger stormwater system. So if there was relief under a hardship situation, that's the one that we had, would recommend and counsel that Claudia alluded to. It didn't set that as a formal policy, but there are clear amendments where, where that came out. So I think as we're looking at this, we're looking at, is this HOA gonna be able to sustain the level of maintenance that, that this plan requires? Or are we gonna be faced with a situation down the road where the HOA comes forward and says, this is too much for this number of houses, and we need some relief? And, and I think what we're really doing is saying, number one, stormwater's important for the city to have an engagement in, and probably number two, it's probably the one piece that you're probably gonna have to take over. And I would probably argue, you'll see this HOA someday down the road wanting some help with this pond. So I think therein lies the policy question for you all as to whether or not you think it's appropriate for us to do. So that's, I think that's really how staff arrived at their, their conclusion.
I would add this, so you talked about you can maintain hardscapes, you can mow grass, or you can treat the pond in the event of a hardship. There, there's a very clear fourth option available, is don't create a situation in which you create a hardship.
Couldn't agree more, and I, that's, that's the point of my policy question to you, is change it up, or, I guess what, if, if the ask is for us to take this on, or we feel this is the appropriate thing to do, then I guess they gotta convince you all that the HOA can sustain this in the long run, or we take it now, or there's some other direction you give them to, to do something different, so...
So I'd like to talk about that for just a minute. The cost of maintaining this pond annually, holistically, with the power to run the, whatever aeration system, be it a fountain or a bubbler, or whatever it would be required to oxygenate this water, you're looking at about four thousand dollars a year, about two hundred and twenty-three dollars a unit. You referenced the project going on in Concord Township across the way, and I think a, a large part of their marketing is that they mow the grass, or that's what it says on the sign out front. So I'm, I'm guessing that it's a full maintenance package that they're selling along with the homes. So I don't have any idea what their condominium or association dues are. They're, I understand, I realize they're freestanding, but I think it might be a condominium sort of situation in terms of the, the group takes care of all the landscape and everything on the individual homes. They probably have a, a snowplow, master snowplow contract and things of that nature. What is your intent for these homes in terms of maintenance?
So we, staff presented it, and I believe you had in your package a, a budget we put together, so they pushed us to kind of have something, we thought it was a little early, but we went ahead and got a budget for what we thought would be included. And it ended up, it's right around two hundred and fifty dollars per month, per unit, and we did some study of neighbors around us, that seems to be pretty consistent with everyone else's, is, is charging. In addition to that, snow removal, we, we believe we need to have that being an option, because a lot of people are gonna be gone, with too much snow removals from driveways, that kind of stuff, it's like fifty dollars a month additional if we did snow removal. So the four thousand dollars that you, that you stated there, and would that be another, you know, per month?
Another twenty dollars a month?
Forty dollars a month or so. It's, it's kind of what we've, we've done to this point. That, that's two hundred and fifty dollars includes, you know, maintaining, we, we, staff has asked us really to be really clear about what's maintaining, so our plans, and what we're gonna, you know, provide, the buyers are gonna show specifically, we're, those dollars are gonna maintain, basically landscaping, not the hardscape, they're gonna be responsible for doing their own hardscape. But we're gonna be really specific about what that includes and what it doesn't include. And it includes, but maintenance of the common areas, you know, so you're, you know, not only cutting the grass, but you're aerating, those kind of things, to have a nice, you know, common area. But once again, we're gonna leave it to somewhat to the, our, our vision is to, to leave it to the homeowners association, decide on what all they want to put out there, so, you know, it's gonna look good, but we're gonna maintain it, right? So let's find the balance there. So that's really part of what we're trying to create here.
So you, you will not be partic, Claudia, could you go back to the slide that, the, one that included the roadway network from Corazon Drive?
Yes.
I think it was maybe the second slide of the package? Okay, so, you have Roma Drive coming in, and it, it continues through to your border, and then, you have the one that is a little bit further out than that?
Yeah.
It shows Donatello coming in on the...
Mm-hmm, and Roma Drive, as well as Corazon and Hamlet, they're all public streets.
There's one further out than that, if you go back there, that's what I'm looking for. So where Donatello comes in, and I can't, I don't know what Donatello turns into at, at that split, but...
Yeah, ultimately...
There's Donatello here is where you come up.
Yes, that, that last section to the vacant land, I don't know if that's called Donatello right there, or if it's called Roma, I don't know which. But at any rate, in, I would imagine that Roma Drive is intended to connect to that spot.
Yep.
So we would likely have a couple more developments similar to this come in, in that land there that's shaded in gray.
That's how it's set up from a roadway network.
Recognize that this purse right here is owned by Washington Township Fire Department. So it's likely gonna be a fire department in that corner there, a fire station.
So I, I guess the, the concern is, is that I don't want to create a hardship situation, and I don't believe that it is appropriate for the city to take on the maintenance of essentially what is going to be this private pond. I suspect if that is our policy moving forward, there'll be a line out this door. I, I don't know, Megan, if you know how many ponds are in the city of Dublin. I know there's...
Yeah, we did provide that information, I believe. There is, it's sort of a fifty-fifty split, as to what we maintain and what we don't maintain.
Oh, it's not nearly a fifty-fifty split, there was twenty-two ponds in Muirfield, of which we maintained none, and I think there was twenty-eight in, anyhow, there's a lot of ponds that, I would, I would suggest that there's probably more than a hundred ponds in the city that we don't have any maintenance of.
And in Muirfield, though, we don't own that open space either. In all these other neighborhoods, the open space is dedicated and owned by the city. So there is a little bit of a, not a hundred percent comparison there, but yes, absolutely.
Regardless, I, I can't see how we could take... Regardless, I, I can't see how we could take this policy, how we could afford this policy moving forward if at every time we're going to incur this kind of expense. The density is what it is, the layout is what it is. You don't have a lot of ability. It's a T-shaped because you have a street that's running through on the, you know, adjacent to Jerome Road and if you're going to access down into the property, you have to come down the middle. And so, you know, that it, that part is what it is. But I, I for one am not really willing to take on the ownership and maintenance of the pond, not because the $4,000 is the breaking point, but, you know, I, I believe that it is our responsibility as government to lay a level field and that everyone should participate in that same fashion. And if we're going to maintain this pond, then we need to maintain ponds. And I, I don't think that, I, I don't think that for every 18 homes that we can, you know, justify that expense on an annual basis, let alone the, the capital cost it would be when, you know, something needs to happen in that pond every 25, 35 years, whatever that may be. So, you know, I'd like to see a way that we can figure out that this pond ownership or this pond maintenance falls back onto the homeowners association, but I don't want to create a situation where it's a hardship and that, you know, the good people that will buy in there come back and say, we just can't afford this pond, it's too expensive, you know, for whatever reason.
I'm just curious, we've always had trouble saying no when somebody comes and they're in trouble, the HOAs in particular.
Right.
I don't know what the count or number would be, but I wonder, what's the, what recourse does the city have, Jennifer, if we just say, you know what, we're not going to do it, we're going to, can we go in like somebody who doesn't maintain a property and, and lean on it later on with a tax lien?
Yeah, so we put into the development text what the HOA is going to be responsible for, but then from that point forward, we don't have any additional technical liability. It's their responsibility. We then have code, we could have code enforcement issues if, say, there are landscaping issues, overgrowth, but that's not really based on aesthetics.
Yeah, but to the extent the pond is not operating correctly for our system and, and to the extent that it drains into the system and it's not working properly, can't we go in and?
If it's creating a public nuisance, if it's impacting public facilities.
So we could fix it and then, and then lean it?
Yes.
So I have a.
We've never had the.
We've never.
We've never done that yet.
And I do have to say that the applicant did not propose this setup. It was really a discussion based on staff and based on the last few developments that have gone through, so.
Well, it's almost like this is one of those policy things that we talked about getting, getting into goal setting. It's a broader discussion for sure.
Unfortunately, these good people are caught in the middle of it.
You know, Mike, I think it is, and I think the challenge is if we look at budgets going forward, we're not budgeting for these things, right? We don't see that in, in where we are. And I think, and I agree with Chris, that for the size of this one and for the price tag of the homes and the amount of fees, it, it doesn't feel hardship to me at this point for, to have that as a, as a part of the, the homeowners association.
Yeah, but the whole discussion is they're going to end up coming back and then you're going to face with that, which we can do if you want to, if you want to go forward with this. I don't have a problem with that, but have that policy discussion.
Yes, I agree.
And make it very clear.
I agree that it's a policy discussion. I think that if, if the cost is roughly $4,000 a year, you're looking at 20 bucks a month per home on top of the, the HOA fees that you've included in here, you know, and frankly, I'd like to see the estate property be part of that HOA, which currently according to the schedule that you provided us, they're not. And I think the other thing that I would have a little bit of concern about is you look through the HOA cost breakdown is I, I would like to understand how that begins to be scalable for, you know, cost of living increases over time. You know, if this stays flat every year, that means you're taking in less money every year if you apply the time value of money. So that would be a concern for me as well and I, I don't see that in here.
If I could maybe offer a couple of observations just based on our experience in the development community, there are other communities in central Ohio that have taken on this challenge in a little different way. They actually have, just like you have sewer tap fees and water capacity fees and such, they actually have a storm sewer fee going into the development of project. And what that does, it pools funds so that when you do have, the city does take over this responsibility. Part of the issue is this basin is constructed not only to meet the city of Dublin standards, it's actually an Ohio EPA matter. So the permitting, there's actually a stormwater management plan that has to be submitted to the state of Ohio, that is the overriding permit that has the enforcement teeth in it. So even if Dublin doesn't have that enforcement, state of Ohio does. And so what, what happens is that enforcement falls on the underlying landowner of the stormwater basin. So as soon as the city of, of Dublin takes ownership, the state of Ohio is going to look to the city of Dublin. So that's something to consider as you figure out your policy considerations. The other thing is some of these communities also in addition to having that initial stormwater impact fee, some cities actually do have an ongoing assessment. So there is, there is an operational fund, but the, the, the impact fee is a bit of an insurance policy. So the odds that any one particular basin becomes a, a capital need for a significant piece of maintenance, that doesn't happen to all 100 ponds, say, that you have in every year, every two years, or every 10 years even, it's just a pool of funds for when those occurrences do take place.
The city has taken a look at storm, stormwater utility in the past and I think if you have a policy discussion, that's one I would certainly recommend that you start to have for going, not, not that you have to do that, but it should be part of your, your consideration when you, when you talk about that from a policy perspective.
Yeah, the, the thing about it is, you know, there's an evolution of stormwater regulation that continues on. So if we look back 30 years ago when we did the development, in most cases you didn't even have a retention basin. And then retention basins became the norm and over time they have swollen. So now a project like this, if we were looking at this 15 or 20 years ago, would have been a very small thing, probably even too small to worry about having a fountain in it. It's, it's more of a, a temporary condition in terms of storm runoff. So I think you're facing a condition that's been a growing and compounding condition. So it's probably appropriate that you have that, that dialogue and discussion. This is kind of, you know, you're feeling like you're at break point, I guess we'd all agree with that, so.
I have a, I have a suggestion, at least in the expense of this one, we found through the study that we just did on our, on ponds, is that we don't have to take on the cost of electricity and the way they used to do aerators. We can use solar aeration, which cuts down quite a bit on, and I do think we have to have this discussion on, on whether or not there's an assessment fee because if we're, if we don't have a budget, we, our capacity for stormwater is very limited and as we build out, there's just no more place to put the water. So we're going to have more and more ponds with every development and that becomes more and more of a burden and every one of these little neighborhoods is spread out by the taxpayers' dollars to pay for these ponds. So I think we have to have this discussion. But we could ask the developer to install or pay for it, the initial aeration system. That's one way we could look at it and that could be a solar one and then you didn't have the cost of electricity and that sort of thing, so.
They are responsible for the initial, initial setup.
It's the maintenance that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's included in that, that they would pay for the, I, I thought the city paid for the aeration system.
It would be the operation.
Just the operation.
For the electricity to.
But not the aerator itself, right. But we are, we are, is it true Dana, that we're, we're getting good use and good, good results out of the solar aeration system?
Right, we did start beta testing those in some ponds towards the back end of last year. They, they have been effective and seem to be operating well, so we'll continue to, to monitor that.
Mm-hmm.
Kristina, do you have anything else?
I think we're throwing a couple more as well.
I don't think my question was answered at all.
Okay, can you ask it again?
Sure. So as I take a look at the HOA cost breakdown, there's nothing in here that explains to me how you're going to maintain a flat monthly fee to the homeowners over time and still be able to provide the level of service and maintenance that's described in here.
So $250 a month might not do it five years.
That's typically up to the HOA.
Basically fit it out.
They have a board of directors, they have a president, they put it on the floor, they talk about it, we need more money to pay for, pay the freight.
Multiple bids, they'll decide on what all we want to maintain and they'll have to find that balance. But we believe that, you know, this budget represents kind of how much area there is to maintain right now and it's representative, it's competitive with the communities around.
Have you thought about perhaps tying that to the, the value of the home? So a percentage of the value of the home?
The homes are going to be similar in value, so I think it's.
Right, but as the homes over time increase in value, so would the amount that they would be paying in terms of, of the HOA fees?
Once again, it's up to the HOA. I think it's going to create a, you know, create an animosity among the HOA if everybody's, you know, saying, you're charging me this for this. I don't, I just, I just want to create a, you know, problem for HOA rather than just keep it simple because they're all pretty much the same size.
I guess these guys have spent a lot of money here getting to this point. They've answered most of the questions. This isn't a huge project, but I, I think we need to at least put it on the floor for a vote, recognizing that council's going to have to have a very, very broad discussion about this at, at our upcoming.
Well, I'd like to ask one question before we do that. Are you willing to take over the maintenance of the pond?
Yes.
By the, by the homeowners association?
Yes, we are.
So we could add that as a condition?
That could be added as a condition?
Yes.
So what if I put a motion on the floor to approve with the 14 conditions that are here with a 15th condition to be worded by Chris?
Just that the HOA will assume all responsibility for the pond maintenance and associated grounds.
That's, that's my motion.
So you're moving that we approve this with that additional condition?
The 14 that were before us.
You live with that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll second that motion. Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
That's it, right? No, and then I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thanks, gentlemen. Good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Ordinance 01-19, Anne?
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and Toll's Career and Technical Center.
Angel?
Good evening, members of council. We are asking for approval this evening of ordinance 1-19, which establishes a commercial TIF over block D of the Bridge Park Development. Provided in your packet was a follow-up memo that addressed questions that were specifically posed regarding the TIF during the first reading held two weeks ago. One of those items was in regard to the list of improvements that could be used, using TIF proceeds. Section two of the TIF ordinance itself provides very broad language regarding the improvements that can be funded using the TIF proceeds. My staff memo was more restrictive, so I will make a better effort for, for future staff memos on Bridge Park TIFs to make sure that the memo is not misleading, but certainly the improvements listed in section two give us the broad flexibility to use those TIF proceeds for some of the improvements that Vice Mayor Amros Grooms pointed out last week, specifically the park, the roundabout, various roadway improvements, greenways, things along those lines, in addition to the base, the base needs within the Bridge Park Development, which is the roadways, the community facilities, all as part of the development agreement. A second question was also posed regarding section four of the ordinance itself and potential amendments that could change the service payments in their distributions. As I explained in the staff memo, the Ohio General Assembly can establish discounts to property owners. So this language is standard in any TIF ordinance and it basically stipulates that should the General Assembly change that distribution or amend it from time to time, any dollars that would be generated in this area would still be flowed through and have to be deposited into the TIF fund.
Angel, that can actually go the other way too.
Certainly.
And by way of example, the homestead exemption, they did away with that when you turned 65 just about a year ago.
Right.
So you could save 10% on taxes, but they said, no, no more after such and such a date. So it, it could work both ways.
Certainly. So with that, I will answer any questions. I would ask, there was a lot of discussion at the first reading about the amendments to the development agreement. I would respectfully request that we separate these two issues because they are two different issues. The creation of the TIF is very different from the development agreement modifications, so I really don't want to convolute the two, the two items, but would be happy to answer any questions with that later on in the evening.
Any questions from council?
Kathy?
So I'm not sure I understand, so the, you will change the language to be broader going forward or not? And so I'm confused about that.
The language in section two of the ordinance itself is very broad. It does not list any specific roadways. It's very generic in nature. Let me pull that up here.
I think the memo said it provides more flexibility that way than it would if we actually did a listing.
But, but there are three things listed in there, so that's what I guess I'm confused about because it.
Section two specifically says to pay for or finance the cost of improvements servicing the parcels included but not limited to water, sewer, stormwater improvements, parks and recreation improvements, roadways, parking facilities, acquisition, acquisition of real estate, site prep. It, it's very broad and it's intentionally done this way.
The language in the memo is the language that's very. Ah, the language is the language. I'm, I'm understanding now.
Narrow, the language in the.
So the ordinance itself.
That ordinance is more broad.
Right. So I will make sure that that language in the memo never appears again in another memo.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
That clears it up. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Kathy? Jane? Anybody? Anything else? Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ordinance 02-19?
Rezoning approximately 13.76 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Blazer Parkway and France Road. We enfrance through from OLR to SO.
I'll introduce it. Logan?
Good evening, mayor and members of city council. This ordinance is for a proposed standard district rezoning for the Dublin Techmark Complex. The site itself is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Blazer Parkway and France Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from OLR Office Laboratory Research District to SO Suburban Office and Institutional. The current zoning permits office, R&amp;D, light manufacturing, while the proposed zoning classification permits a number of professional and administrative uses such as general and medical office. Specifically, this applicant is requesting the rezoning to allow for institutional type uses for a future tenant. The suburban office district also outlines a number of conditional uses such as the ones listed on the screen. Upon approval of the rezoning, any future development proposals would be subject to the requirements of the city's zoning code and would file directly for building permits. Based on the thoroughfare plan, this property abuts two corridors identified in the, in the plan, Blazer Parkway, which is a collector's street, and France Road, which is a minor arterial. The planned right-of-way outlined in the thoroughfare plan has been met by the existing conditions of both corridors and therefore the applicant is not required to dedicate any right-of-way as part of this proposal. The property also falls within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan boundary that was approved in September of last year. The future land use designation included in this plan is the mixed-use regional metro Blazer sub-district. The sub-district focuses on the introduction of a mix of uses and future land uses identified in, in the district include office, personal services, retail and restaurants. The proposed SO district allows for uses either permitted or conditional that align with this future land use designation. The Dublin Corporate Area Plan also includes recommendations to further refine development or redevelopment in the area. Recommendations include improved street skate treatment on France Road along with the creation of gateways. The applicant is not proposing any modifications at this time, but the proposed rezoning would, would allow for those recommendations to be met at a later date. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning at their December 6 meeting and staff is recommending approval of this ordinance at the second reading on approval of this ordinance at the second reading on February 11. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chris?
Signage has been a hot topic of conversation at this building over the last, I don't know, 15 years at least that I'm aware of. With the rezoning, what would the optional changes be in the signage package as opposed to the existing zoning that's on the facility?
There would be no difference. Standard districts refer to the standard sign code that is listed in our zoning code, so the same standards that are in place today would still apply for the property moving forward.
Have you heard anything from the applicant about coming through with a sign package for the site?
I have not.
An amended sign. So I read through the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes, and it looked like some of their concerns were relative to use. The most concerning uses to them were conditional uses. Have you heard anything from the applicant about once this rezoning happens to pursue some of the conditional uses?
Aside from the prospective tenant that they have in place for the rezoning itself, the applicant has not indicated to staff of any additional uses. However, conditional uses that are outlined in the SO district would still have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is the contemplated tenant in this building, would that require an additional conditional use, or is it satisfied through this SO zoning district?
It would be satisfied through this. It's listed as a permitted use in the SO district.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Christina? Michael? Ladies?
Planning and zoning did... I was just going to say, Planning and zoning did discuss that, as you said, and it's an educational use, isn't it?
Correct.
That's what I thought. It's an educational use. It isn't permitted otherwise. And they did bring that up, and especially since they said because any conditional uses would have to come before planning and zoning, they thought they had a protection there.
Okay. Thanks, Logan. We'll see you back at the second reading on February 11.
Thank you.
Resolution 04-19, Anne?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into memory on terms of understanding with the Franklin County Board of Elections for the use of municipal property in the administration of public elections.
Dana?
I'll introduce her.
Thank you. Dana?
Standard memo for this request, and certainly something we want to provide for the sake of our voting public.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 05-19, Anne?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rev. 1 Ventures.
I'll introduce her.
Thank you, Christina. Colleen? Where'd Colleen go? There she is.
Good evening. First, a clerical remedy. We realize that in your packet you did not have the contract, so it has been updated on your screens before the meeting tonight and in your green folders, and has placed a copy of the actual scope of services. So I do apologize, and now I understand some of the questions I was receiving by email because you didn't actually have the contract in front of you with the other support materials. So if you have any specific questions, we can definitely go over that. Additionally, in your packet is a one-page update from Rev. 1 that shows their annual report with some of their figures, and in a nutshell, this is... The agreement is a continuation of services that we receive from Rev. 1, and it is tied to the Third Frontier Grant Funding Program where our contribution allows the state to match dollars that goes toward funding entrepreneurs. Some of the things in the contract, which really didn't change a whole lot from previous years, it's tied to facilitation and promotion of the Dublin Entrepreneurial Network. They help us assess potential and legitimacy of startups in our community. They do provide a lot of training and mentorship to our tenants at the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center. And then in addition, one of the new items in this year's contract, which differs from past years, does talk about how Rev. 1 plans to assist our team as we look to do some innovation planning around research and development in the West Innovation District, and we hope as we start to formulate some of those plans, we have something more concrete to bring to you in the next several months. And then tonight, we have Tom Walker, who is here this evening. He is the president and CEO of Rev. 1 Ventures, and he can answer any questions as well.
Welcome, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say before we pepper you with questions?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. Members of council, Mr. City Manager, it's always a pleasure to be before you. I'd like to say in the outset what a pleasure it is to work with Donna and Colleen, true professionals, and their real assist with us in the field and the work that we do. Roughly five years ago, we were before you, and we presented a vision for assisting entrepreneurs in the region, and I'm proud to report that all of those plans are really driving the creation of new companies in the region. We have roughly a $1.7 billion impact over those five years, and the city of Dublin and the entrepreneurs in this community are a big part of that. In fact, one of the fastest-growing companies in central Ohio right now is Updocks, which headquarters there in Bridge District. So something for all of us to be very proud of. We were the first investor in Updocks many years ago, and we have two or three other companies here in Dublin that we hope are going to follow right behind them. So I'm really proud to be here tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Tom, any questions? Kathy?
So what percentage roughly of new entrepreneurs are working out of the Rev. 1 offices versus the DEC? Or how do you see entrepreneurs using facilities as well as facilitation and support in this changing environment?
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, we really don't compare the Rev. 1 facility and the DEC. They're completely different facilities, missions, scope, things of that nature. Rev. 1's an 80,000-square-foot facility. It's one of the largest innovation centers in Ohio, one of the largest in the Midwest, probably about the third in the Midwest. So we house 54 companies today. We churn that building about 40% a year. So our model's a lot different than any innovation center you'll find in the country. Our model's to get companies in and move them out. So we see a lot of companies through that building. Our model is not to house them there for a long time. Our average tenancy is about two years, so our goal's to get them in, and then they can go back to the communities where they live.
Could you share a little bit more about what the requirements are when they're there or whatever, because this is interesting?
Yeah, absolutely. So to be in our facility, they have to be engaged with Rev. 1, so it has to be a high-growth company, or high-growth potential, I should say. So that is, it's a company built around some type of intellectual property, and it has to be a company, you know, willing to work with us as much as we want to work with them. And we check with them on a quarterly basis on their growth and things of that nature. We invest in some of the companies that are in our facility, but not all of them, but we have data now that shows that if you're in our facility, you're going to grow about two times faster than those that are outside of the building, and you'll also raise about two times the amount of capital. So we also have specialized facilities. We have 16 wet labs, so if you're a biotech company, you're probably going to find your way to the Rev. 1 facility. Is that your question?
Perfect. And so looking at the environment that we're in today, can you share a little bit about what's changing and what's different about how you provide services, or what do you think that the future's going to look like as we move forward?
Sure, absolutely. So because we have a building, we're always associated with a building is where all the activity happens, and we view the building and any facility as a tool in a toolbox. So it's not the tool that's going to drive the growth. The four key things that we're looking at this year and probably over the next few years for the region are how to... Is the battle for talent. It's just absolutely huge, and so we're recruiting in talent, and so, you know, coming behind Kenny McDonald and his report really kind of dovetails nicely. So everyone we're moving to town, we're trying to access that talent. We are taking a little bit different approach. We want to access diverse talent because our model's about inclusive entrepreneurship, and we believe central Ohio, if we can attract diverse talent, we're going to win that game in the country. The second is capital. The capital gap in Ohio and central Ohio is huge for these high-growth companies. They're not bankable, so it takes either angel or venture capital, so we're doing a lot of things to continue to grow the capital sources. Infrastructure, to your point, is key. It's an important component. It's not the component, but as our economy is growing, as our cities are growing, we need the kind of infrastructure that can attract and house the kind of companies that are growing right here. So whether that be wet labs, whether it's innovative space for software IT companies, things of that nature is really important. And the fourth is how we connect with our vibrant corporate community in central Ohio. That is a huge asset for all of us, and part of our mission has been, that's a key asset. How can we connect them to the startups because it'll help both grow? And our data shows that that is true, and so we work with Cardinal Health and others in our region to help build innovation programs, but help them link to our startups, and we're putting more and more emphasis on those things. So those are our four pillars that we're focused on.
Thanks, Tom. Anything else from council?
I have a couple of questions. How do you see yourself moving forward? What changes? What are the new spaces that you feel might be on the horizon of really the requirements of a startup to move to the successful sphere?
Capital is huge, and capital will solve a lot of the other gaps. So if there's enough risk capital in a region, it'll attract the talent to the region, so we tie those two things together. When I first presented before council five years ago, we had no funds under management. Today, we have roughly $100 million of venture capital under management. So all those funds have been raised since 2014, and we are often the first investor in many of these companies. So healthy roster in town, Updocks in town, you know, we try and go in really early so we can give these companies a chance.
When you're an...
I can see us continue to raise more capital.
When you're an early investor in some of these technologies or companies, do you maintain an investment stake in that company, and have you realized returns on those investments?
We have equity stake, and we have had exits. Actually, last year, we started realizing some of our first exits.
When I went to the National League of Cities meeting in Los Angeles, we went to the Lacy Facility, the LA Crete's Innovation Center, and they were doing some pretty remarkable things, and they had prototyping labs. So I hear you speak of having wet labs, and they had, at the time, there's probably a new one out, but at the time, they had the largest 3D printer that was available on the market, in which they really encouraged people to come and use their prototyping lab. And many... They had quite a few success stories already because they had, you know, they had the ability to weld stainless steel, among other, you know, metal welding facilities. They had machines that could digitally punch metal sheets, and they could build a prototype of nearly anything in this building through the 3D modeler and the various other woodworking tools and all of that soldering, everything else. Is that something that you see a real market for in the Columbus market?
It's a need. It's part of the infrastructure. So for companies that actually are building a hard product, that need rapid prototyping, that's part of that inventory. But so is high-speed internet.
Right.
You know, so for the software IT companies, that's the kind of infrastructure they need.
So they had also had different computer labs that were available that my tour guide that was walking me through this, they had various computer elements, and they would say, this computer has more than $10 million worth of software on it in their lab. And so people could come, and not only could they prototype physically things, but they could also prototype different applications and things like that that they could generate from the software that was available to them that they would never otherwise have access to. They said that they achieved that $10 million worth of software through a federal grant. Do we... Do you have the opportunity to get access to... Because that can be a very limiting sphere for someone to try to get into, that that would exclude them by not having access to the proper software that could help them to develop the proper tool?
Yeah, I'd have to know more about the program that you're speaking to, to know if there's federal grant opportunities, but having the right kind of computer labs, not only for people to use and build prototypes, but also for training opportunities, which points to the talent gap.
Mayor, if I...
Sure, Dana, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing I just want to draw some connectivity to, and thanks, Tom, for being here and for your partnership and all that Tech Columbus has done for our companies and in partnership with our economic development initiatives. You know, sometimes we correlate this in what Tom does, more so to the DEC and its focus. While they have a presence there, I just want to kind of explain that connectivity there. Tom and Rev. 1 is really the regional incubator, if you will, and where the state funding and other funding, grant funding could flow through that agency, as sort of the regional agency for entrepreneurship is how we've always looked at our relationship with them. Our Entrepreneurial Center was intended to be a way to create a local portal, and so we've often referred to it as an extension of what Rev. 1 or formerly Tech Columbus does. In other words, trying to bring their service closer to the 70,000 workers we have here in Dublin and 45,000. I've always been a big believer that somewhere in a cubicle in Dublin is the next Cardinal Health. So how can they get access to the services, get the idea to the right people to vet, and get into the right networking environment, and potentially access to capital and so forth, and training and development that they need, and it be local without them having to go downtown to get it? No offense. Love that you're down there. But you know what I mean, to this. So we're trying to bring the service closer to Dublin. That's really what that's about. As our Entrepreneurial Center unfolded, you know, it was really more about our focus on technology. So then you get into these nuances about the possibility of maker spaces. What do those look like relative to welding and printing and 3D printing and woodworking and metalworking and all that sort of thing versus our case, and I appreciate Tom brought up the notion of broadband, because in the center of our Entrepreneurial Center is 100 gigabit broadband capacity and capability, as well as access to National Science Foundation rack and so forth, so genie rack. So that's kind of a different kind of maker space than the others. The regional maker spaces, you know, I would refer to down in Franklinton, somewhat down in your incubator, and up at the Point, I think it's called, in Westerville, has really rolled out a really cool maker space. We're always trying to look at how do we leapfrog that, and with our focus in IT, we've been a little bit more towards that software side of the playground as opposed to the other one. So just a few nuances about kind of the differences, but I think that at the end of the day, the thesis or the theme of what I'm trying to say here is that this is intended to be an integrated network of these opportunities that we try to bring. And if you ever want to go down, if you've not been to Rev. 1 and you want to go down and see that, I would encourage you to go down. I'd love to take you down and let you see that and see all the pieces and parts, and then swing by Franklinton and some other places and see how some of these work together. But thanks for letting me just kind of share that experience.
Any other questions from council?
I just have one. I noticed that you had some new additions here in the contract, which I think is to give a little bit more help with, is it economic development? Can you explain that a little bit, what's new in this?
Sure. We talk about DEC 2.0 or what's next with our innovation platform, and now that the model at the DEC has changed a little bit, we want to make sure that we're continuing the what's next. So really looking at the West Innovation District, where not only does the city have land, but we have a lot of partners, right? We've got Ohio University, we have Amazon. So how can we leverage some of our infrastructure that we have out there and our partners and our experts at Rev. 1 and come up with what are these next innovation ideas and places? So we're spending the next several months, and also as a part of our strategic plan, trying to lay the groundwork of what those things will be, and Rev. 1 is definitely going to be assisting us in a lot of that visioning opportunity, because we do know that there are some gaps in the market that need to be filled, and we've been very good at always being first to fill gaps.
Right. I like that idea, and that's why I wanted you to explain that, because Rev. 1 being as successful as they are and being able to raise the capital that you've been able to raise in the years that you've done it, and we have DEC, to be able to utilize your advice on how we build our own Rev. 1 as a small satellite in order to bring DEC and some of these other things and really grow some of our own companies, we can learn so much from what you have to offer us. So I like the idea that that partnership is flowing back as advice to us as well as to entrepreneurs, because I think we have so much to learn as we build strategic plans to try to grow our bases. And then the second question I had for you is, do you have any data on... I saw that Updocks is here, and I saw a couple others that have stayed, but of your Rev. 1 companies that have grown some, how many in the last three years would you say have headquartered or located in Dublin?
Updocks is the largest. Healthy Roster is another that, you know, started here and has never moved. They were actually never in the Rev. 1 facility, which is an important clarification. Not all companies, you know, live with us. It's not a requirement. One that came out of the DEC, Steve Johnson, Off the Beet and Path Coffee. I don't know if has anybody had his coffee. He's a new company that we're looking to invest in. It's a really interesting nitrogen delivery mechanism for coffee, and we've been able to introduce him to some of our partners like Smuckers and others. So there's some really interesting opportunities.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Another one to add. Share, who we're doing our ride share with. They are actually one of the portfolio companies right now at Rev. 1.
Yeah, thank you. The obvious one I missed.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Really appreciate you coming in. Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 06-19?
This is accepting the lowest interest rate for the 5,800 building roof replacement.
It says Dana. Thank you, Christina. It says Dana/Megan, so...
Therefore, it's Megan.
Therefore, it's Megan. Go, Megan.
Good evening, members of council. Staff recently received three bids for the 5800 Building Roof Replacement Project, which consists of removing the existing membrane roofing systems, insulation, and then complete replacement. The lowest and best bid for the project, after staff reviewed, was submitted by the Harold J. Becker Company. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution and to accept the lowest and best bid and enter into contract with the company.
Any questions from council?
Move for approval.
Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you, Megan. You did that so much better than Dana would have done it.
All day long.
That went out without a hitch. Staff comments?
Thank you, members of council. Got four items, but the first one I want to go to is the Crawford-Hoyne Development Agreement follow-up. There was a memo in your packet about that that Angel alluded to previously. So, just like to try to entertain any questions you might have relative to her follow-up. Also, I see that Greg Daniels is still hanging with us. Thank you, Greg, to help out if there are any other questions.
I guess I have a comment maybe more than a question.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is done and dusted, right? This is done. The agreement's in place. The bonds have been issued. Where are we in this process?
The bonds have not been issued yet. Crawford-Hoyne is working with their lenders. I think they anticipate to close those bonds around March 1st.
I mean, the reason I ask it is in the attachment that we got, the first payments are indicated in there to be early 19. So, I, anyway, I was just, but as far as the agreement is done, that's done and dusted, right? So, our comments here are information only.
The development agreement modifications themselves have not been executed yet. We obviously had the discussion with the public market back in the fall. Because these numbers that are included in here are really driven by how these bonds close, it's kind of a chicken and an egg argument. So, we need those numbers to insert in here to know much, know how much additional par can be called each year and also to set those targets, which fundamentally, we thought that the language in here is what we walked away with after those council discussions. As far as setting a dollar amount by which if the revenues exceeded that, the city would capture all of that revenue. And that's what we accomplished, we believe we accomplished, with the language that you see specifically in Waterfall 6.
Yeah, again, I guess my confusion, and as I read it, the insertion of line item five now, that's really where the new language is. It, as I understand it, and as I read it, it basically says the sharing would only occur after and which time all debt payments are made, all turbo payments are made, any past catch-up is made, and if we pass this revenue gap, this revenue target, which as I understand the definition, covers all expenses. So, I don't really see how we're sharing in this. If that, in the way that's put forth, we've essentially removed ourselves out of line until those are, so those are paid. So, I'm not confused, I'm not sure this meant the spirit of what I thought. I thought it was more on an annual basis. But the way this works now with the turbos is that it goes back and gets caught up for any turbo that wasn't funded in the year before. So, we're only sharing when, at which time, everything is paid. So, I don't see, I don't see the sharing part of this. I'm not seeing how that plays out in this language.
Yeah, so it depends on how revenues come in. So, the way it's structured with the turbos is there is a limit on the turbos that get paid in any particular year. So, those are the targeted turbos.
But the way the language says is if it didn't meet that objective in a following year, before we would get any money of that, it would have to be, it would have to go get caught up.
If they've missed a turbo, they have to catch up.
So, where does the sharing part come in? I don't get that.
So, it comes in in two places. First, at the bottom of the waterfall, there has always been a sharing component.
But that was no change.
That's no change there. The second part is if the revenues exceed the expectations. So, there is a conservative bond model that's put together when they're underwriting this. If those revenue targets are exceeded.
But that was in the original language as well, frankly. I mean-
Not that part of it. So, what would happen in the original language is we hope for additional revenues. But that would continue to go down to the waterfall and get shared at the very bottom.
Original, we were paying the bonds off early in the original agreement, which I preferred, but.
But we weren't in the original-
The sharing was 50/50 in the original development agreement. So, we did not get 100% of anything in excess. The 50% that the developer retained could use to then advance pay the debt service.
But now, we're saying they're going to advance pay all the debt service and anything in arrears to that debt service, and then we participate. So, again, I don't, I'm confused. In fact, I mean, that's the way the language reads.
That was the whole point of the turbo bond structure. The original development agreement did not contemplate any, which is why that sharing with us only receiving 50% of any extra came after everything else. Part of the discussion with this market was to allow the opportunity for the bonds to get paid off sooner, which is why it really got elevated. But then, instead of splitting any excess 50/50, we capture all of it.
And again, I think where the confusion comes in is in any given year, it was, if there was excess, we would share it. Now, what it says is no, that's only the case. It has to go back and pay any, anything that's in this table. And we never saw that table when we had the discussion. This table was not included in our review here. So, we're not sharing in a given year. We would only share in that year if all the things in arrears were paid, which means it's paid off all of that and if there's excess. So, again, that's not what I thought it meant from a sharing perspective. But it seems to me at this point, we're, it's a done deal. We're down that path now. I was just a bit disappointed that I'm not sure that that was the spirit that was intended in that, but.
It was certainly not our intention to not meet the spirit of that discussion. I think when we originally brought forward the development agreement modifications, we did not have a preconceived notion that there would actually be a set dollar amount that could be redeemed. And I thought it was through those conversations that really, especially that second reading of the development agreement modifications where the developer left and we left saying, okay, well, maybe we could put some parameters as to the extent of the callability of that debt service. So, actually, we felt like by essentially putting a cap on, now you might view it the opposite way that-
It doesn't feel like a cap, it feels like a floor, yeah.
But I would also offer too that we view these revenues, they were, they're really floors based on a set dollar amount that was very conservative in nature. This block has higher use and more square footage than what was originally contemplated. So, I think that the possibility for upside does exist. Now, it wouldn't be, you know, probably in the next 10 or 15 years. But we were not expecting that to begin with as, you know, when we originally entered into this agreement.
Angel, you mentioned earlier, and may I just clarify this for me? You mentioned earlier that by utilizing the turbo bond structure, bonds are paid off sooner, therefore, the city would realize revenue sooner than they would have had they not utilized a turbo bond. And with this, where before it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, before it was a 50/50 sharing, once the turbo bonds are paid off, which would be earlier than anticipated, then the city would gain 100% of that revenue. Is that correct? And how much difference in years are we talking? The turbo bond would be paid off earlier than the traditional bond would have? What does the turbo bond offer you in earlier payoff in years?
It's a little hard to make that comparison because what the turbo bond essentially allows them to do is finance the market. And without that, because it allows them to pay down the debt faster, thus save money, thus finance the market. So, we'd be talking about a smaller bond issue that wouldn't have the market without the turbo structure.
I see.
That's the whole reason for that.
So, it isn't really a quicker payoff?
But in the way that the schedule is built, even when the bonds are paid off, that floor is still set high because the taxes kick in. So, the way that schedule works is we don't, we don't participate until we hit that threshold. And even when those are paid off, that threshold still stays at 2.9, 2.8 because I believe it's the schools and the other payments start to kick in. So, when, because when you look at that revenue schedule, unless we exceed the 2.9 or what total expense, then we don't participate. So, even when that happens, the way the revenue schedule is in there, the revenue schedule says we don't participate until all of these happen. And if revenues exceed 2.9 or whatever that is.
Are you speaking about the targeted revenue?
I am.
So, those, we participate at 100% above those levels?
Right.
Based on the cash flows, there is participation even at revenues below those levels.
That's not the way, it says, it has to exceed those for us to-
For the city to take the first cut at it.
The first cut, yes.
Now, there's other waterfall buckets that get filled up first for ONM, for example.
Yeah.
The way it's designed with the revenues, it's still designed to have more money than that that would ultimately fall down to the city's bottom line. It's just, this was a special exception to put the city a little bit higher than it ordinarily was in the old 50/50 split.
Again, I think we're well down this. I just don't, I just don't think that was the sharing that I had anticipated would occur. We didn't see those schedules, so we didn't see what those floors and ceilings were in there.
Well, I think too, from a policy, if we zoom up to 30,000 feet, you know, from a policy perspective, we're asking about whether this facility should be considered a public, and I hate to oversimplify, but I'm just going to, about that being, so do we accept that as a, one of the public facilities that then be thrown into consideration? I think that in and of itself as a policy decision has an impact. And it's probably going to be fairly negative in our ability to collect. But on the other side, are you looking at it as such an amenity, if you will, that adds to the value of the overall? So, then, as we have mentioned, while we may have been projecting our potential to earn pretty conservatively, these kind of amenities add to overall value in the long run and help to bolster it. So, we can pick up on that at some point. So, I mean, that's, therein lies the larger policy.
Dana, I totally agree. I think it's a great idea, support the market, none of that. I'm just saying, I think the way this is written, it isn't, seemed to be sharing until way later in the cycle. And again, that wasn't what I thought we had agreed to.
Well, I guess, I guess I surely don't want to walk away from here with some expectation not met. So, you know, we're bringing this back to you in the best, our best ability to get that done and achieved. If you don't feel we've crossed the threshold enough to, or not getting enough done in this, then we're meeting the intent. My commitment to you was you passed the ordinance, you gave us some direction, and we will come back and tell you what we achieved. And, you know, trying to meet that to the extent we possibly can meet it and for all these pieces and parts to come together. So, I guess if you don't feel we're meeting that, then maybe we need to, I don't have to sign anything. You passed an ordinance, I don't have to sign anything. And I certainly don't want to sign something that this council would feel like we somehow didn't meet the mark. So, we either need to understand the shortcoming of that, if there is in fact one, or we somehow didn't meet the mark, or we move on and it's okay for me to, for me to sign it. But I haven't signed anything yet on your behalf, nor do I want to if we're not meeting the intent of council. But I gotta, we gotta go back to Crawford-Hoyne and say, this is, this ain't going to happen. So, which-
And what I'm saying is at this point in the cycle, that doesn't feel right to me where we are in the cycle at this point. They're out shopping these bonds with this. I just, again, I don't believe that that was what was intended. But at this point, I, that doesn't feel like the right thing to do to me either.
To reset.
Yes, to go back and start. I mean, they're out shopping these. We, you know, I just, that doesn't feel like the right thing to me at this point in the discussion, so.
I guess I would like to understand more of what the intent is and what you're looking for here. And I can just, and maybe a little bit of reiteration from our perspective. The original proposal by Crawford-Hoyne was that all of the revenue, whether or not it exceeded a particular revenue target, would be used for the turbo redemption. So, during the first, you know, until the bonds are entirely paid off, 100% of the revenue, no matter what, would go to turbo the bonds.
And that's basically what this is. Because we don't participate until those turbos are paid and any in arrears are paid, the way the schedule is written. We didn't ever see that schedule.
Yeah, so the schedule, after we got that feedback from council, was we said, okay, in order to meet bondholders' expectations, because to get the bondholders to invest, they need to see a certain time period to get paid off. Or like implicit in their analysis, has to be some amount of turbo payoff they see every year. So, if that is met, at that point, we can say, hey, the bondholder expectations are met. Any additional revenue that comes in, anything you don't need to meet those bondholder expectations, rather than to redeem bonds beyond their expectations like you've proposed, let that come back to the city and the city decide how to use that money. So, that's, those are the improvements that we tried to make to this document after that. If we miss the mark with council somehow in terms of the improvements you're looking for, I'd still like to understand that. You know, on purpose, we haven't signed it yet until we've had conversations like this. There may be things that we can still do, even though this is being shopped to bondholders to help meet council expectations here. I just want to understand what that is so we can have a conversation.
Would the rate be better if, as they go back and shopping, if all this went back to the original agreement? And all the excess went to pay the bonds off early? Do they get a better rate?
I'm not sure. We can ask that question. I'm not sure that they would.
But at the end of the day, if we pay them off early, there's significant savings in terms of the interest charge.
Yes, yes.
Which then lends itself to everybody and then we share 50/50 after that. And that was the original structure.
Once they're gone, so the original 50/50 structure wasn't a 50/50 split between the city and the developer. It was a 50/50 split between paying the bonds off faster and the city. So, once the bonds are paid off in either case, all of the excess is, goes to the city and the city determines how to spend that money.
I guess I just have one question. In reading the documents and those languages, it's very cumbersome. And I understand why it has to be cumbersome, that that's purposeful. But it was my thought, my thinking, and this is what I'd like to confirm or deny with you, that, you know, we made some concessions in this rewrite that benefited the developer. But it also benefited other people in the waterfall in terms of they were going to share earlier in these turbo bond payoffs that it was advantageous to other entities other than the city, namely, those that were immediately behind us.
I'm afraid I'm not following for that. I mean, so in the waterfall, you know, there's a lot of items. But basically, at the very top, when it becomes time to share, there's sharing with the school and the county. That's ahead of everybody. Then the bondholders. Then it used to be in the traditional waterfall, an ONM contribution to the developer to help defray some of those costs. And then faster redemption of bonds for 50% of anything left over after that, and then 50% to the city. The city could even choose to redeem bonds faster. The faster bonds are redeemed, the more money is left over. Leftover money, that's entirely up to this council to determine how to direct any leftover money at the bottom of the waterfall.
So, we, so who was, other than the developer, who are the benefactors of these changes to the development agreement?
So, I would say primarily the city. I suppose we could get to a point faster that if there's other infrastructure improvements that the city agrees with other potential beneficiaries to build, we're talking years out at this point, that the fact that we have this sort of structure could facilitate that. That's pretty speculative, I think. But it was primarily for this, and this gets back to Dana's point. The change for the Block D waterfall was to facilitate the public market and the financing that was necessary for that. And that was the essential policy question. for that. And that was the essential policy question of, is it worth it to change the standard policy that governs all the other blocks for this one particular block to get that public market and a financing that works for that? So, if we do nothing, what happens? Do they have the draft that has all of this language?
And there's an ordinance in effect that would authorize me to sign it, and I could sign it. And that would be my intent. But I wasn't going to do that without living up to my commitment that I made to this council, that I would report back on where we got in this language. I think what, you know, what we're saying is, this is an appropriate position to take, to help assure that the bringing on of the market, we'll call it, is, as an amenity, is meeting the intent of your policy decision, for what it's worth. And it may not be worth nothing to you. I think on the back end of that, the value of this whole thing rises. And, you know, we talked about some conservative estimates. We're really looking at some pretty low estimates on values. We've already seen those values exceeded, and to the extent that this, these things can, that these bonds and so forth can be paid off faster as a result of that. The city will take its position on the upswing, on the upside of that, hopefully sooner rather than later, as that value continues to increase. If I'm misstating that, Greg, I'm staying at a pretty high level without getting into the waterfall and all that. I think really, the end of the day, the economics we're trying to achieve here.
Then I guess, this is here, here is where I think we are. These are extremely complicated documents to get through. The fact that you made the effort to capture the comments of this council and get them into that agreement, I don't think anybody would doubt that you made a good faith effort to do exactly that.
Yeah.
I don't think that there is, at least a majority of this council, that wants to pass a motion that undoes what we had done, which ultimately, for us, was the policy decision to move forward with this. So, unless, I guess, I hear if someone wants to make a motion to revisit this language, and it can pass, I would say, let's just go with what we got. You made a good faith effort to do and capture all of the sentiment that was discussed. We probably failed in some regards. We succeeded in many. I think we chalk it up to experience, unless there is a contingency here that wants to undo this and start over.
Well, and, you know, and I don't think we failed at this. I think, I think, I don't want to speak for anyone here, but I think maybe the disappointment is, maybe not as much of the upside as fast as we would like to see it, versus our ability to assure that this gets paid off, and we take advantage of the upside a little bit further down the road than we might have otherwise had been. I mean, it basically says you're adding a whole new dimension in cost to this thing, and therefore, it's going to take longer to get to your money. But that was the conscious decision that was made. And I think...
Greg, here's the thing that I would say, and I'm not suggesting we revisit this, as I said, we're down the road. I'm not suggesting we revisit this. I think the learning lesson here is, when we have these before us, because they are complex, we should have these schedules, and we should have the numbers, so that we could see what is the dollar consequence of making those changes. I think, I think the, for me, it's, let's be sure when we're having head nods about sharing, that we have some numbers in front of us, so we know. I think that would...
It's just, it's such a moving target is part of the problem. I mean, that's the challenge.
Well, I mean, we have moving target numbers now. Why didn't, we could have had them before.
We're also, you know, one month away from them closing the bonds. Five months ago, they were in a much different place. And I just want to reiterate, we genuinely thought we were meeting the intent of council. What we have included in here is more restrictive by setting limits. Even though it rolls over from year to year, it is very much more restrictive than what we had originally proposed. So, I just want to make it very clear. We are always all about meeting the intent of council, and our apologies if we missed the mark.
Greg, I think we need to, I think we need to move on. As I said, let's just, let's just agree to agree or disagree and go on with it.
I don't want it to be left out there, that if we would have had more of information, more information, we might have made a different decision.
I just also want to add on that note. I don't disagree with what you said, Mayor. The only thing I would say is, sometimes when we ask about putting numbers into tables and analyzing it, it's a swag. And it's a guess, which can be held against me down the road. And I'm not going to put numbers into things like that when I don't have solid numbers. And I don't know that, you know, I just want to be fair to everyone here and to our decision makers and our policymakers, that I don't want to put numbers into things that could have been a swag or a guess. Is that fair to say, or am I misstating that? And I, to the extent that we had hard numbers, or could guess with high probability, yeah, we could take it. But there'd be a lot of footnotes about what that may or may not yield. So, I just want to be careful about that. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Be clear, the charts and those being added don't change for me what was the policy decision the council made. So, if we then do nothing, your next staff comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, we will execute that. The, I just want to also mention that in the information only was a, an announcement that our state legislators, namely, State Senator Kunsy and State Representative Liston, will be holding joint office hours here at the municipal building. I just wanted you all in the public to know that. That'll be held on Monday, February 4th, from 3:30 to 5:00 here at City Hall, and they will do that by appointment, so the public can notify their offices and set up an appointment. But I think it's great of them to have a presence here at City Hall and be accessible to the public that way, and we thank them for that. Also, the State of the City, we mentioned Thursday, is Thursday, March 14th. It'll be held at the Exchange. There will be a reception from 6:00 to 7:00, and then, presentation from 7:00 to 8:00. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Angel, just to point out some highlights from the end-of-year financial report that she had.
Thank you. Normally, we don't give much of a financial report at the end of the year. It's incorporated with the State of the City and during the annual report. But we just wanted to highlight a few things. We did include a packet, your standard quarterly packet, in with your information only items. But just a few key points for folks to know. Our general fund expenditures for the year exceeded our revenue by about $2.9 million. So, therefore, as a result of that, our general fund balance decreased by the same amount. Despite that, our fund balance remains strong at 74% of our actual expenditures. This amount is $18.8 million above what our 50% reserve level is. The most notable reason for our expenditures exceeding our revenue is because during 2018, our general fund funded nearly $9.9 million on the acquisition of three properties, the Young property, the Thomas property, and then the property located at 5555 Perimeter Drive, also known as the Delta Building. These three purchases were also in addition to the $1.9 million that we transferred to the capital improvement tax fund pursuant to our general fund balance policy. So, in total, we had about $11.8 million of expenditures out of our general fund for the year that were essentially one-time purchases, or purchases that are going to be used to leverage for future economic development purposes, and really result in additional funding to us. So, if you take those out, our general fund expenditures were $7.9 million less than our, less than the revenue we brought in. So, from that standpoint, we maintain that from an operational standpoint, the day-to-day expenses related to the city, we do not operate, or we did not operate in a deficit position. So, again, our financial position remains strong. I think it's important for the community to understand that. The fact that we invested $11.9 million in capital assets and infrastructure out of the general fund alone in the year just shows our ability, our financial strength that we continue to have here at the city. So, there's more information in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions either tonight, or if you have a chance to go through it. But we wanted to make sure that those bullet points were highlighted for the community.
Thank you. Dana, anything else?
I had a couple of questions about that. So, this is our first chance, really, to see what happened in its total, in its totality in '18. And so, do we have the ability to get a summary of, so it says here in the memo that 90.4% of the general fund budget was actually spent. Is it possible to get what didn't get, what didn't, and I'm not asking you to do it right now, but in the future, to get what, what didn't we spend? Who didn't spend all that was budgeted? Who overspent on their budget? And to try to get a summary of what did we actually spend and where?
Sure. That's very easy to do. I will tell you that nobody overspent on their budget. We cannot end the year...
I don't mean overspent, but, you know, 90.4%, somebody went, had a budget number in theirs exceeded, probably for good reason, and maybe there was an adjustment made to the budget or whatever. It would just be nice to be able at the end of the year to see, you know, where we came out with that.
Yeah, we can slice that and dice that. That's one of the beauties of our financial software. So, I can provide a follow-up memo to you in the next, in the next packet thereafter that gives you a summary of that information.
My next question revolves around, you talked about revenues generated from service payments, payments in fee of lieu of taxes, that they decreased 1.9% over 2017. Total collections for 2018 were $9,115,909. Can I get, in the future, not tonight on the spot, but an explanation of why our TIF areas decreased? Did we have some TIFs rolling off? Did we have some not realize their evaluations? Or what those reasons for the decrease in that? I would like to see that information. I think it would be very helpful.
Would you mind if I included that? We will report out to council as in conjunction with our Turk meeting, which is held usually in April and May. We're going to do a comprehensive look at our TIFs and provide some additional information. Would you mind if we did it in conjunction with that, or would you like that information sooner?
When is that? That's not till...
It's April, May timeframe. I can get it to you sooner. That's fine.
It really is just an explanation. I'm not asking to go through every TIF, some summary documents.
Sure, that's easy to do.
Again, I don't want to see every number. Just, just here's what happened in a snapshot. My final question is relative to the Munist documents that were associated here. And I'm not sure if it was, if it's an end-of-the-year accounting function or what. But most all of the available budgets, I'm sorry, the revised budget amounts are all negatives. So, I'm not sure...
Are you looking at the revenue report or expense?
Let me get up to the top here. Revenue report?
Revenues are always reported as negatives. That's just a quirky thing in our accounting system.
So, when you make money, it's a negative number?
Yes. So, for example, on page one, we budgeted nothing for miscellaneous refunds and reimbursements. We brought in $10,000, which shows a year-to-date expended. It's because that column title is expended, it's a negative amount.
Okay. So, I think this would be really helpful to digest perhaps in little chunks along the way before we get into our budget cycle again, is actuals versus budgets. And this kind of gives actuals, except we don't know really what they are. You know, we'd have to look up every code as to undercharge for services. You know, there's a number of different things. And so, I think it may be a good time to start building budget and actual kind of reflections for us as we move into our...
This does provide this. There's not any more granular detail. So, for example, in with local taxes, you see everything that rolls up. Maybe a better example is intergovernmental. You'll see cigarette taxes for Inklon County, Delaware, Union County, local government funds, liquor permits. So, all of this, these documents show in detail every revenue and expenditure account, our original budget, any adjustments, and what we brought in for the year. So, I guess I'm a little unclear as to what more budget versus actual.
Well, this is a cumbersome document to try to read.
Okay.
I think, for anyone that tried to review it, I think it's a very difficult document to read. Is there, is there any other format which we could, you know, similarly to how we get the budget documents, right? They're very clear and concise of what we're spending those monies on. It's not nearly as thick. This is 232 pages.
Right.
And, you know, those documents that we get for budgetary purposes were not nearly that voluminous.
Sure. Let us play around with some things.
Let's take a look at that.
Yeah.
I think what we've been trying to do, and probably more so since we went to the new system, we didn't really use, to give this, I don't think we gave this much granular information in packets. This is going back a ways. But when we brought on the new system, we were like, hey, you know, here's easier to get it to you. Now that it's electronic, it's even easier, because we're not having to copy all that. So, let us take a look at that. And if you have, if any of you have thoughts on the level at which you'd like to see this, we could find a sort of a commonality on what you'd like to see.
So, if we could just take the '18 budget and put the actuals in there of that, of that document we received, that's the kind of thing I'd be interested in seeing.
Yeah, I understand, because you're going to have personnel and then under each one.
At the department level.
Yes.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm wondering, if this, if this doesn't actually, the way I look at it, actually kind of equates to that. So, let us play with that format and get back to you on this.
That would be very helpful. That's my last question regarding the financial update. But thank you.
I have a question about that, then. As we're doing that, could we also, and I know we discussed this during the budget, could we also add a actual to budget on the CIP?
We're still working on that. Because of how we track capital, it's different. Right now, it's a manual process. So, that from a revenue and expense is a lot easier, nut to crack. We are working on that so that we can provide updates. It's just not as simple as you might think it is. But I recognize the desire for that.
And again, quarterly, I mean, it wouldn't have to be monthly, but quarterly, you know, it would be, it would be good to go back for '18 like we have here and said, this was what the CIP for '18 was by category. How'd we spend against that?
Right.
And then, to track that. And I, and since it is the beginning of the year, if we could put that in place now, I think that would be very helpful for us as we go into the next plan.
Yes. We've been having internal discussions in our department about how we implement that. It was just a function of probably how we set it up when we originally implemented this, that we didn't know what we didn't know. And if we could do it over again, we'd probably do it over again. So, now we've got to figure out how we rework that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Dana, any other staff comments?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. P and Z. Jane?
P and Z. I have to show off something that staff has brought forward, the new commission, Planning and Zoning Commission Resource Guide. We are concentrating pretty heavily on bringing more information, more training, more resources to our commission members. This is an ongoing, we'll add to it, Claudia and Vince and Jenny, all of them that worked on it, is going to be very helpful. It includes a lot of things besides orientation material. But hopefully, we'll be able to utilize this not only in hard copy, but also digitally, to be able to offer a lot more resources to our commissioners, keep them updated on conferences, that sort of thing. So, thank you very much for the effort on this, staff.
Is that it from P and Z?
I think that's about it. Yeah.
Admin, Chris?
I would like to thank everyone present here this evening filled out their survey. So, thank you all for doing that. We will be meeting tomorrow to put a little bit more meat on the draft agenda for our retreat. And that, we'll get that out for your review and comment and updating. Again, we still have P and Z interviews date yet to be, to schedule. And then, we have our performance reviews on the 27th. That's all I have.
Community Development Committee, John. I can just read here what this says, that there's a meeting scheduled for February 4th to review the Bridge Street District Code Amendment Phase 1, and review the approval process, and to review the code regarding park fees in lieu of land dedication, neighborhood beautification grants, and Airbnb review.
You want to get the, we probably need to get on the calendar, the Beautiful, Beautify Your Neighborhood grant. So, if we could start circulating some dates for that, would be very helpful.
Sometime in March, I think, is what they told me.
Yep.
So, when we're on that, what is the deadline for the beautification?
I don't know.
The application?
It's a planning...
I thought it was April, but I'm probably...
It can be whatever you want it to be.
Whatever we want.
We take them all year long. I don't, we hear them until we run out of money.
Okay, thanks.
We only used to do it once a year, right? We made it twice a year now, and we changed. We loosened up the, you can't get it consecutively. Now you can. Nobody else applied, so it's all, it's all good. Chris, anything else about that?
No.
Finance, Michael?
Just that we, we have a hotel motel tax policy discussion. We talked about scheduling a meeting for it, but I think it's going to be a very important part of our goal-setting. It should be on the agenda, because we have, the timing's very good right now because of some things going on with DAC and, and really the whole pot of money. So...
Are you going to try to meet before the retreat?
No, I thought, I thought we needed to have that discussion collectively.
Just do it at the retreat.
Yeah. That should be one of the items on the agenda, if we can.
Finance committee meeting of the whole, kind of, okay.
There you go.
All right.
I'm sorry. Are you suggesting on the retreat agenda?
I thought, I thought we had talked about having it on the retreat agenda. It's one of the policies. I thought we had talked about having it on the retreat agenda as one of the policy decisions.
Well, it'd be nice to have your committee report coming into the retreat of what you all think is the right direction to go.
I think it's a broader discussion than just the committee. I think everybody needs to participate. It's one of those broad-
On your survey, did you put that as the policy, one of your discussions?
Well, on my survey, I said we should list all those policy issues that we've talked about all year and then collectively try and prioritize them and then we could take a look at the intersections and find out which ones everybody thinks are most important. Because you're not going to get to everything we talked about in the minutes over the last year.
I make, I'll make sure it's on the list.
Just from a pragmatic standpoint, the retreat's the 21st, right? So we're like four weeks out anyways, it can be tough to-
So that's all I have on finance.
Put it on the list.
Thanks, Mike. Public Services, Christina.
Thanks to everyone who did schedule their phone call with Helen of Gallagher Consulting regarding the Dublin Arts Council Strategic Plan. That's, just have your conversation and they'll get back to us with the wrap-up of whatever it is they're doing. It could be John that presents that back to us as the DAC liaison.
That it? Coda, Kathy?
We meet tomorrow, or Wednesday, so, nothing, thank you.
Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
I don't have anything to update, but I'll update you guys after the next DFA meeting.
Morpsy, Chris?
I, I know the hour is late, but I think it's worth spending a few minutes. We did, through Morpsy, Dana and I and several others from staff had the opportunity to go visit the Hyperloop One team out in Nevada and it was really a fascinating trip. Hopefully during our retreat, we'll have more opportunity to discuss what those potentials might look like for us as a community. But it was very interesting to validate the technology, to validate that the ability to apply the technology, you know, once the monetization of that technology is figured out, and I think that's a very real space of a game that we want to play in, I think it will change a lot of the way that people move. So thank you for the opportunity to go and we will be hearing more. I know Dana's going to write up, include in the summary my notes to him and other staff members' notes and present it to us as a whole, so. That's it.
That it? Thanks, Chris. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
No, nothing.
I said all that for you to just say. U.S. 33 Innovation Order Group, how about that?
I think, yeah, we haven't met this year yet, thanks.
And John's not here for the Dublin Arts Council. Board of Education, Christina?
No, haven't met.
And Washington Township. My friend Eric Richter, you got anything for the good of the order, Mr. Richter?
Yes, sir.
Proud and happy? Dublin Bridges Liaison, Jane?
Well, we're not only growing in Dublin, we're probably the kindest community in the city. Just real quick glance at 2018, Dublin Bridges touched 1,862 families, children and adults. This community gave $82,967, a hand to hand. Dublin is the top community to fill the needs of all the other, of all the other bridges in the area. Just something to let you be proud of. One other thing that's really unbelievable is that 20 personal care pantries have been established. All the Dublin school buildings have a personal care pantry, so if a nurse or a guidance counselor sees a child that needs something, Dublin Bridges and the people here in the community have provided that for every child in every school building.
Wow.
We have, the other thing is, two things, we are partnering with most of the nonprofits, many of the schools, of the churches are going to become members, Washington Township Fire Department is a, is a partner, the City of Dublin Centaro. What Dublin Bridges has done for the city is bring together all the kind hands from every sector of the city, brought them together to create a place where there will be no real needs. If they are identified as a need, the city will fill them. I think that's amazing. I think that's absolutely-
The people of this city will fill them.
The people of this city will do it and they'll do it anonymously and 90, over 98% of all the needs are filled and the only reason that it isn't, the other 2% is they don't put them all out there, but over 110% are filled. And then the last thing I would say to you is that if you believe in the kindness that Dublin Bridges does, tell your friends to get on their email list because you'll get a little blurb on your email that says kindness needed and, and you will have to race to your computer to fill it because you'll-
Because somebody else will snatch up.
Because someone's going to get it.
How do we get on the list? Just specifically?
All you do is you, you go to dublinbridges.org, that's all you do. Dublinbridges.org. And it'll say, would you like to sign up on the email list? And that's all you have to do.
And how often do you get those requests?
Maybe once a week. Maybe once a week, maybe once every other week. They just, and you'll get on and they'll go, oh, kindness filled. That's it.
It's so great getting those firefighters involved. Those guys running out of those houses, there's so many people that they're maybe the only people they see from the outside world.
So we'll have to add, so we'll have to add somehow, it's not just we grow, we grow in Dublin, but we are kind in Dublin.
That's great, Eric. Thank you for them doing that.
I want to add one thing to that. I did have, Kathy was concerned, raised a concern about our federal employees on furlough and their ability to meet their needs. And I was, did have the opportunity to talk to one of the directors of Dublin Bridges today. They're going to send out an email to all of the guidance counselors and all of the elementary, middle schools and high schools to try to identify needs that are a result of our furloughed federal workers. And I would extend the invitation to you, Eric, to, to distribute to your contact list to try to build those needs and bring those through the Welcome Warehouse, the Dublin Food Pantry and Dublin Bridges. And I think the generosity of this community and notifying all of those outlets to try to work to meet any of those unmet needs. So I did offer that the city would like to participate in whatever, we don't know what, we haven't identified the need yet, so it's premature to bring what the ask is. But hopefully some of the needs, if there are needs that are being unmet, will be identified and we can address those and try to connect the right givers and receivers together.
Excellent point.
Thank you for doing that, Chris.
Jane, anything else?
No.
That'll do it? Okay, well, we're going to stay with you for a roundtable.
Oh, there we go.
Kathy? Michael? Christina? Chris?
I would just like to give a belated birthday to our city manager here. I had the good fortune of being able to travel with him on his birthday and so, his birthday was on the 10th, so we want to make sure that we wish him a happy belated birthday. He did have a good birthday, so.
And you're not going to tell him why? Yeah, well, we're just going to let that hang.
Now that you stepped into that, you need to tell the story.
So, it's his birthday, we're walking by a slot machine and he's like, hey, I have $20, why not? He feeds $20 into this slot machine and on his third pole, he wins $1,000.
Oh, my gosh!
And I will tell you the level of discipline that our city manager has, this is why he's a general, is I have a picture of him, he cashed out $1,016, so he had $4 invested and he got $1,016 back out of the machine that he went to the cashier and he cashed out. So that's the level of discipline and reserve that our general is capable of.
His wife somewhere there, they took, you know, we-
Took it anyway.
What happened from there, I have no idea.
Yeah. There we go.
Oh, yeah, she did because we sent her a text with a picture, so she knew. But happy belated birthday, Dana. Certainly a treat to be able to spend that time with you.
Thank you, Chris. I was down at 10TV this afternoon. We Dublin honored Dom Tiberi as a STEM star. COSI is going to be putting on there, it's going to be really fantastic, the Science Festival that's going to come through in May. And of the four suburbs that are going to be participating, each one got to nominate a STEM star, which was someone that held, had sort of technology help the community. And Dom had one of his driving simulators there with Maria's ride and the, in the distracted driving and all that stuff. And so we had nominated Dom to be our STEM star and Dom is a, just a pillar of this community and a, just an all-around great guy and him and Terry, the courage they've shown. It's been five years now since Maria was involved in her accident and I think he has spent just about every minute since then trying to spread the word so somebody else doesn't have to go through that. And we sat and talked after it was over and he told me stories now that he's sort of become the repository for families who lose a child, they call him. And he says, that's what keeps him going. It isn't just Maria's message, it's those people that call him every day. He gets these calls from parents across the country and he is more dedicated than ever and he's interested in starting a free school with 20 of these driving simulators and he's started discussions and of course Todd Hoadley being the guy he is, he's saying absolutely bring it over and they're going to try to start a classroom in Emerald Campus and try to get this into the curriculum of our kids because it is the number one killer of our kids. And he's, this guy is tirelessly trying to wrestle this beast to the ground and he is such a fantastic, and whenever he talks about it, he always talks about Dublin and Chuck Collier's down there and our school system's down there, Kyle's down there and our businesses are supporting him, we are supporting him, the police, the, the community.